So, good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call this meeting to order. Let me just start. My name is Henry Garrido. I'm the executive director of District Council 37, and I'm also the co-chair of the Commission along with Arva Rice, who I understand will be joining us a little later. We want to start by thanking Mindy Bogstein and Dominique Mendez at John Jay College for hosting this evening. Tonight, we will conclude our second round of public hearings tackling, well, taking place around the five boroughs. These hearings have continued our effort to solicit proposals from policy experts and the public on substantial effective amendments to the city charter. The charter is our city's foundational document. Because the charter plays a vital role in establishing the structure and procedures of city government, it shapes how decisions are made on a wide range of issues affecting everyday New Yorkers. The Commission has been in panel to conduct a thorough review of the charter and craft proposals to be put before the voters. While this commission was convened via local law passed by the city council, we are an independent body. Regardless of merit, any proposals that can be achieved by local law will not likely be up for our consideration. The Commission will not consider any proposals that weaken local democracy of New Yorkers' rights. At our first round of borough hearings and through meetings with community partners and organizations, we received many suggestions on what to change in the charter. Following the process, the Commission staff produced the preliminary report outlining several focus areas for our consideration, including government accountability, budget transparency, and land use. Our second round of hearings has concentrated on these topics, with each hearing covering one topic. We previously had hearings on government accountability in Brooklyn, and we will hear some additional testimony on this topic tonight. A final note of process: We are not the only commission reviewing the charter. This commission is distinct from the Charter Revision Commission convened by the mayor, which I understand the meeting tonight. Both commissions are working simultaneously but separately. As you can see, the power of democracy is working as we speak. So why don't we just start, thank you, by asking the commissions to introduce themselves? I just want to acknowledge that to my left is the, who's serving as our commission's counsel, is Harry Black. I'm sorry, Isaiah Black, who's joining us as counsel today. But I'd like to ask the members of the commissions to briefly introduce themselves, starting to my far right.
Thank you, Chair Garrido. My name's Navarro Lopez. I have the pleasure and honor of being appointed by Speaker Adams.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Serena Longley. I'm really happy to be here. This is my favorite topic that the commission's taking on, and I'm an appointee of the Speaker of the City Council, Adrian Adams. Thanks.
Good evening. Mark Winston Griffith, appointed by the Public Advocate Jomani Williams.
The other way.
Joanna, appointed by Speaker Adams.
Dr. Ram Rodja, appointed by Staten Island Borough President.
And all the way down here, I am Allen Swisher. I was appointed by Queensborough President Donovan Richards.
Thank you, and I understand we have said commissions online.
This is Commissioner Manny Pastore. I had the pleasure of being appointed by Speaker Adams.
And hi, I'm Andrea Copel, also appointed by Speaker Adams. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Robert Brogley, appointed by Bronx Borough President Vanessa Gibson.
So, thank you all for coming. We're now going to turn our portion to the testimony, a portion of tonight's agenda, which will focus on government accountability. The commission staff, as the commission staff indicated in its preliminary report, increasing government accountability could strengthen New York's local democracy in several ways. This includes securing the independence of oversight agencies by establishing baseline investments and making other structural enhancements, subjecting additional commissioners and senior officials to advice and consent, establishing additional means of removing a mayor, increasing transparency surrounding mayoral vetoes and opportunities for public engagement in the veto process, adding duties, responsibilities, and procedural safeguards that the mayor most adhere to when declaring emergencies, and authorizing the city council to submit local laws subject to mandatory referendums at a special election. Today, the charter contains an array of mechanisms and independent agencies designed to ensure city officials are responsive to the people they serve, yet structural risks remain, preventing those features from working as designed. The commission is therefore interested in hearing more tonight about how we can update the charter to promote good governance. But before we start hearing testimony tonight, I remind those in attendance that this is a formal government proceeding and that the quorum must always be observed. As such, audience members shall remain in silence at all times. If you intend to testify today but have not yet registered to do so, we will accept registrations up to the first 30 minutes of tonight's hearing. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. Video recording or photography is not allowed from the witness table. At tonight's hearings, we will ask folks to limit their testimony to three minutes, and I'm going to be strict on it because we have a lot of people waiting to testify, and we have time constraints. I will let you know when your time is up. And while tonight's hearings focuses on government accountability, we will welcome any testimony on proposed revisions to the charter. I'm going to call witnesses up in panels. Commissioners are encouraged to ask questions based on testimony given, but I ask that you hold your questions until each member of the panel has testified. Finally, I ask that our witnesses and commissioners speak directly into the microphone so that our Zoom attendees can clearly hear you. So please, let's call the first panel. We ask that you introduce yourself and your testimony, and please limit it to three minutes. So first, we're going to start with New York State Senator Liz Kruger. Tony Simone, New York State Assembly. They are both on Zoom, and they're part of the first panel. So Senator Kruger, good to see you.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Appreciate your time. My name is Liz Kruger. It's spelled wrong on your document, but don't worry about it. I'm the state senator representing the 28th district, which includes the Upper East Side, parts of Manhattan, Midtown Manhattan, and Roosevelt Island. Thank you for holding this important hearing today and giving me the opportunity to testify. I want to bring to your attention and the attention of the public a bill that I'm carrying along with Assemblymember Tony Simone, S 590. And the bill would be a critical change in state law that we believe would improve transparency, accountability, and increase democratic choice for New York City voters in the charter revision process. The legislation repeals the bumping provision in state law that allows a mayor to use a charter revision commission to block ballot proposals initiated by New Yorkers through a petition process or the city council. It would also require a charter revision commission to be created at least 180 days before submitting any proposal for the ballot and publicly release any proposal 30 days before submission for the ballot. Last year's election provided a perfect example why this legislation is necessary. When the current mayor used a hastily converted charter commission to bump a city council-approved proposal he didn't like off the ballot, that robbed voters of their ability to make their voices heard on the issue. Current law allows a mayor to do the same thing to charter revision proposals through voter-initiated petitions, meaning the people sign petitions saying, "We want a question on the ballot", and the mayor can bump those as well. Mayor Adams is certainly not the only mayor to have used this power, which effectively amounts to a preemptive veto of an election outcome. I would like to quote from the Commission's preliminary staff report: "When a local law requiring approval in a referendum is blocked from being submitted in a special election and a general election, the voters are denied the opportunity to directly reform their government. Furthermore, the ability of a mayor-appointed commission to unilaterally prevent a referendum where it is otherwise required arguably creates an imbalance in power in favor of the mayor and away from the very people, the voters, that the mayor represents and their representatives, the city council." I couldn't agree more with the quote from the Commission's preliminary report. That is why I will continue to work in Albany to pass Senate 590 along with Tony Simone, my co-partner from the Assembly. We want to rebalance the powers between the mayor and the city council so that New York City's democracy remains strong and functional. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Assemblyman?
Good evening. I'm Assemblymember Tony Simone, representing the West Side and the 75th district. I thank the Commission for the invitation to testify today. The Commission to strengthen democracy is an aptly named this year. While many of us share the fears over the actions being taken by the federal government, we must also be wary of the abuse of power at the local level. The city council is the elected representative of the people, where I once worked. Yet, throughout the history of our city charter, whenever a council-formed charter revision commission is formed, the mayor just happens to form one as well. Coincidence. Under current law, when a mayoral forum commission submits any proposals to the ballot, all other proposals are barred from the ballot. Currently, the charter revision commissions convened by a council can be pushed back indefinitely by a mayor. The so-called bumping provision weakens our democracy. That is why I sponsor legislation with State Senator Liz Kruger, A 3665 and S 590, to remove the bumping provision, allowing all proposals to be placed on the ballot and add a sensible solution, which is that when there are two competing proposals on the ballot, the one with the more votes shall prevail, whether they be formed through a mayoral or council commission or through a referendum of the voters. I applaud this commission for tackling the issues of oversight transparency. New Yorkers deserve an open government that they can build trust in. I am particularly pleased to see the recommendations made in the preliminary report regarding land use. Our city is deep in a housing crisis, and this council has taken recent steps forward in addressing the crisis, including the Fair Housing Framework law and the City of Yes. The commission should continue to move forward. The proposal for requiring community boards to include ideas for growth, improvement, and development in their statement of community district needs. Manhattan Community Board 4 did just that in 2022, which provided housing agencies with a well-thought-out and detailed blueprint of increasing local housing supply. Additionally, I encourage the commission to study methods through which our city can streamline the approval process for new housing. By bettering technical support of community boards, local input can be obtained in a way that is both informed and received faster. To escape this housing crisis, our city must build. With our limited open space, this growth must be well-planned but cannot be burdened by long bureaucratic delays and processes. Growth must also occur in neighborhoods across the city. The housing market does not exist in small bubbles. When one part of the city rejects new housing, that puts pressure on the rest of the city, increasing rents for all. I thank the commission for studying these issues and look forward to your final recommendations to our city charter.
Thank you for your testimony. We've been joined by two new commissioners, two additional commissioners, in person, so I'll ask you, you can kindly introduce yourselves, please.
Good evening. I'm Rod Jones, and I'm appointed by the city council chair.
Good evening. Rahul Agarwal, appointed by the mayor.
Thank you, Beau. Now, we want to open for questions. Are there any questions from the commissioners with the two witnesses today? Yeah, Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner, Chair Garrido, and good to see you, Senator Kruger, and good to see you, Assemblymember Simone. My question, it's fairly simple, is how can we, the commission, and how can the public in general, help you to get this bill over the finish line? There's not much time left in the legislative session in Albany, so, you know, we in the commission share your view that really to strengthen democracy at the city level, and quite frankly, the state level, it's important to repeal the bumping position. But I think it would be helpful to know what can we do to help you make sure this gets a vote and then pass it and sign it to law.
I'll answer for the senator. Okay, I'll let Tony answer for the assembly. I think as many of you as commissioners, as individual citizens, and anyone listening tonight, needs to let their state senator and their assembly member know that this is an important thing to get done. We're not preventing a mayor from putting out proposals. We're just saying enough is enough. Let's let the people also have the right to have their recommendations put on ballots and the city council. So you've got weeks left to contact legislators and urge them to support this bill coming to the floor. Tony?
Liz literally said what I was going to say, and I'm glad she went first because she's an expert at this. But look, in true democracies, the loudest and the majority of folks that contact our offices, we look at. I literally tell my staff to tally the constituents in the district on an issue. If I'm undecided, we don't always necessarily agree with the exact sentiments of every constituent, but in the rush to pass our bills, with, I think, barely a month to go, a lot of members have many competing bills and interests. It's good that you contact your electeds. You have folks contact the speaker. In my house, the more they hear about how important this is, we've gotten plenty of press on it. We will try to get more in this short window. It rises in their heads in the level of importance and the possibility of passage. I'm confident we could pass it, but I haven't been in Albany as long or maybe as a staffer in the past. I'm always often surprised how quickly things happen and how slowly things happen. So it's really up to the citizens and the folks in the districts to contact their electeds to make this a priority.
Thank you. An online Commissioner Pastore?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Senator Kruger, Assemblymember Simone, for your leadership on both these issues and so many others. And I guess my question is, do you have any fears that there could just be too many choices for voters? And if you have that fear, do you think there's anything we should do about it?
You know, when we thought about the bill, Manny, and we wrote the bill, we even got the more complex question: What if you have two ballot questions that seem to contradict each other that you're voting on? And the answer is, well, then whoever gets the majority vote is the one that wins. So I actually think that voters can become pretty sophisticated about how many different ballot issues they're looking at. To be honest, I do feel that mayors tend to just throw things on every time there's an election just to stop other proposals from going forward. So if we had this law, I suspect we wouldn't see quite as many proposals coming out of the mayor each and every time there's an opportunity to vote. But if we lived in an iron-rigged state, to be honest, these kinds of things would happen all the time.
I agree with the senator, and I think the voters are smarter than you think. So I think it would be welcomed by most voters if this were to pass into law.
Thank you. There are a couple more questions, so Commissioner?
Hi. Thank you for your testimony. I don't disagree that voters are sophisticated, but when I think of the last ballot, the last time we had ballot initiatives before the voters, there was some confusion. And I think particularly the way they appear on the ballot and how reductive they can be in their language, that it's difficult for people, when they get to the ballot, to actually figure out what's going on. And I can see bills, I can see proposals that could potentially confuse. So my question is not around whether or not, or around directly contradicting proposals, but if there's some form of like overlap, so to speak, is there any vision towards some kind of reconciliation before it even gets to the ballot?
So I know we passed a law in Albany that ballot initiatives changing the state constitution need to be in simple English at no higher than an eighth-grade level because of exactly that concern on constitutional changes. Perhaps the City of New York ought to also pass, if you haven't already, its own rules about what should go on the ballot so that it's simple, and again, no higher than an eighth-grade reading level. But for all I know, that's already in law, and I just don't know it.
All right. Thank you. There's, I think, one more question? Yeah, go ahead.
Senator, Assemblyman, thank you for being here tonight and also for sponsoring this bill. One of the questions that I had throughout this process, and I'm not sure whether you've been able to glean this from the legislative history, but why does this bumping provision actually exist in the first place? Was there a rationale for it, or was it just a quirk in state law?
Tony, do you know? I do not off the top of my head know why this originally started.
I do not, but I know who would definitely know. My predecessor, who was the sponsor of this bill before me. So I will definitely ask my predecessor, Assemblymember Dick Goffred. I bet you he knows, or will know how to find out.
For people who don't know Dick, he usually knows, whatever it is. But I will point out, I remember distinctly Mayor Giuliani bumping off a voter ballot question about, they didn't want to pay for sports stadiums. And he very much wanted to pay for, I believe it was the Yankee Stadium at that time. And so he was convinced he had to come up with some fairly ridiculous, as I believe, questions to go on the ballot to make sure that the voters couldn't say, "Why should we spend taxpayer money to build a sports stadium for a private company?" I know I was angry about it at the time, since I was a voter in New York City at that time.
Any other question?
Thank you. I think my understanding is that this bumping provision exists due to a court case, not that it was necessarily the intent of the original law. But my question to the Senator and to the Assemblymember, does your bill just apply to New York City, or is it something that applies throughout the state?
I believe our bill would only apply to New York City.
Yes.
Thank you both for your testimony. We're going to move on, but I truly appreciate your coming on today.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. So we've been joined by one additional commissioner. You want to introduce yourself, Commissioner, please?
Rachel Edman, Chief of Staff to the New York City Comptroller, appointed by the comptroller.
Thank you. And we're going to call the next panel, which is our Public Advocate, Jomani Williams. Would you come to the witness, please? Peace and blessings, so you can start whenever you want.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Peace and blessings, love and light to everyone. As mentioned, my name is Jomani Williams. I have the pleasure of serving as Public Advocate of New York. Before I jump in, I want to thank everyone in the room, the chair, the commission members, and fellow New Yorkers for your participation in this open, transparent, publicly noticed process to make government better and fairer. The Office of the Public Advocate acts as a watchdog to ensure that city agencies are as efficient and effective as demanding by the people of New York. I set forth in Section 24 of the New York City Charter. The Office also investigates and resolves constituent complaints relating to the services provided by these agencies. As the second highest ranking elected official in the city, however, my ability to fully serve New Yorkers can be undermined by the existing language in the charter. While the charter is a living document, excuse me, that has grown and changed, just as our city has grown and changed, the language governing the public advocate's ability has not kept pace. I ask the commission to consider and solicit feedback concerning a mechanism through which the public advocate can require officials and agencies to answer questions posed by the public advocate, whether that mechanism be some form of subpoena power or otherwise. To that end, I make two recommendations respective to the Office of the Public Advocate. First is regarding subpoena power. As I raised on my statement at the 2019 Charter Commission, the charter states that the Office of the Public Advocate should have timely access to those records and documents of city agencies which the public advocate deems necessary to complete the investigations and queries and reviews. However, city agencies could fail to comply with these requests to no consequence in the absence of a subpoena, which would delay investigations that the Office of the Public Advocate are required to conduct. Giving the full Office full subpoena power would better allow the Office to fulfill its duties as mandated by the existing charter. This would avoid lengthy and expensive lawsuits to receive the information the city should be sharing between agencies, the only current remedy. The charter also allows that the public advocate may hold public hearings but is silent as to whether the public advocate may require witnesses to attend and testify at these hearings, a noticeable gap subpoena power would fill. Additionally, I'd like to call attention to the need regarding standing to sue. In 2019, I also gave testimony in essential power for independence and to best represent the people of New York City not afforded to the Office of the Public Advocate, standing to sue. The charter does not make clear public advocate standing to sue on behalf of all residents of New York City because the Law Department has a determination over which officials with the Office of Public Advocate independent from mayoral agencies. Clarifying the standing to sue would improve transparency and accountability in New York City. The governor recently acknowledged that in the current climate of corruption and the appearance of corruption, that the citywide elected officials in New York City should have the ability to hire independent counsel and have standing to sue. I'd also like to address the charter and support external independent review of law enforcement bodies. Right now, we are in the earliest stages of remediation tasked with addressing the administration's inability to effectively manage ongoing violence in New York City jails. But like Rikers, the court-led oversight will not last forever. We must look to the future. The New York City Board of Corrections should receive a minimum budget tied to 1% of the expense budget of the Department of Corrections. This would allow fulfillment of the charter-mandated duty to perform oversight of the Department of Corrections and is consistent with recommendations from numerous entities, including the American Bar Association. An investment into the BLC has serious benefits to the city that can include averting financial risk from lawsuits whose causes can be identified and addressed earlier, independently identifying and substantiating DOC needs for funding and allowing for better informed decisions relative to sentencing and facility policy. Changing the composition of the Board of Corrections, majority mayor appointments to the follow system would also allow for independence between agencies. The city's other law enforcement oversight body, the Civilian Complaint Review Board, CCRB, is similarly understaffed. Setting a minimum budget for the Civilian Complaint Review Board tied to 1% of the expense of the New York City Police Department would correct this. As a workforce responsible for performing oversight for the largest police force in the nation, it makes sense that their budget be tied proportionally as it is in other major cities like Chicago and Miami. Allowing for direct access to the CCRB for bottom-one camera footage and other relevant materials would avoid delays and allow for timely decisions, increasing public confidence in the process. Finally, allowing final approval of disciplinary authority decisions to rest with the CCRB, not just the NYPD Commission, is crucial to ensure accountability for police misconduct and should be considered as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. I ask you to stay for a moment. We're going to hear from Councilwoman Gail Brewer, who's going to testify, and then we have some questions for you. Councilwoman, are you on?
I am. Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead. We can hear you now.
I am Gail Brewer. I represent the Upper West Side, and I did speak previously on March 10th at New York Law School, but I wanted to add a couple more items. The report that you did, the preliminary staff report... The report that you did, the preliminary staff report emphasizes correctly minimum budgets for oversight agencies. And I pay attention to this because I am Chair of Oversight and Investigations Committee. I testified in March that this model has been successful with the IBO, whose funding is tied to the Office of Management and Budget, the kind of thing that the public advocate just talked about. And similar models should be considered for all oversight agencies, as you just heard. Your staff listed eight such watchdogs, some of which I'm embarrassed to say I forgot, but you remembered. But omitted was the Special Commissioner of Investigation for the New York City School District, meaning the Department of Education, known as SCI. I chaired an oversight hearing on SCI in June 2024, and I urged this commission to include SCI in any plans to strengthen independent oversight agencies. Like other oversight agencies, SCI investigates fraud, corruption, and serious misconduct at DOE and two retirement systems. SCI's budget has remained exactly the same since FY '22. 6.3 million. Of that, 6 million is designated for 55 staff members and 335,000 for everything else under OTPS. How can an office of 55 people with virtually no money for investigation tools adequately oversee an agency that employs 140,000 people across 1,800 buildings on an annual budget of $40 billion? So I know that tonight is mostly about government accountability, so I wanted to mention that to you. One other item is revocable consent agreements. You know that a revocable consent grants an individual or an organization the right to construct and maintain structures on or over ineligible city property. Generally, these revocable consents are granted for 10 years, and they can be renewed. As it sounds, the city retains the right to revoke an agreement at any time. Current rules around revocable consents are encumbrances to sensible uses in the public right of way like sidewalk cafes, roadway cafes, now e-bike battery swapping cabinets, and electric vehicle charges. All fine. This is the challenge. There is a long timeframe to obtain, to obtain a revocable consent agreement. You've got to advertise on the local paper. You have to go levels of review, and of course, you have to pay quite a bit, out-of-pocket expenses. So the goals of the agreement, in my opinion, should be changed, and they can be accomplished with a simple permit. Thank you for the opportunity to testify again, and I really appreciate it, and I love being with the public advocate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we go into questions, I wanted to acknowledge you've been joined by our co-chair, Arva Rai, if you'd like to.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'm serving as co-chair, and thank you for taking the time to be part of our conversation.
Thank you. Question? Go ahead.
Hello. Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you, public advocate, for the testimony. I have a question for the public advocate. You spoke about your recommendation that we give, we try to get subpoena power in the Charter for the public advocate. Can you speak a little more to why the current mechanisms don't work and haven't worked? And specifically, I'm curious, one, one thing you mentioned was you can request information, but without the ability to enforce it. And I wasn't, I couldn't tell if you were saying there's an ability once you request if an agency doesn't respond, if you have any tools to, you know, to escalate it or get a subpoena at any point currently. And then I'd also love to know if your office has ever tried to request that a court conduct a summary inquiry and how that went and why that isn't a sufficient mechanism.
Thank you. And actually, in 2019, we we gave a list of recommendations to try to strengthen office. Thankfully, one was accepted, which was, they can no longer, if you recall, Betsy Goffred's budget was demolished by Mayor Bloomberg. Because of the, some of the changes that were made then, that can no longer happen, because that was a plus. But as I mentioned, the subpoena power is still something that we think would strengthen. There is no other mechanism. We can ask for the information if they don't give it, public pressure, or trying to go to court. Going to court is, as you may know, is just a, it's a, it's a longer battle, and it's a little, takes a lot more effort and resources. We have less, we have, people don't know, we have less money than than most of the former president. And so we're trying to figure out how we can use that as efficiently as possible. But having something else that's a little stronger before we get to court, I make things move a little bit smoother.
What about, have you ever tried the, requesting the court to conduct an inquiry?
We have not.
Okay. Is there a reason why not, or?
Oh, no, I, we, I spoke to my GC about this a few times. We've we should, we should try that. I know that sometimes going to court in the past has actually weakened the public advocate, so we sometimes get a little concerned, but we should, I'm going to definitely bring that up with my general counsel and see, see if she has something else to add to it.
Yeah, I know you have excellent general counsel, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I have some policy here. Team is where, is where I'll take notes. But thank you.
Good to see you, public advocate.
Good to see you.
I think we all got a crash course in mayoral removal recently, and I think everybody in New York City is very familiar with all the arguments. In your position, what other mechanisms should the Charter consider for mayoral, mayoral removal? That's my first question. My second question is, where did you get that big Knicks necklace?
Oh, I saw the second one first. I knew I wasn't going to make the game, so I went over to the Garden to just pick up some paraphernalia. Their paraphernalia is really expensive, but that, so I tried to find something that made sense, and that chain made a lot of sense, so I appreciate it. And it was a good luck charm, because now we about to face the paces. I actually think there is the mechanisms there to remove the mayor. So I haven't thought about adding additional ones. It seems like there were, were enough, there was enough there. People chose not to do it, and so I don't know if adding another one would allow it to be done or not be done. But it was, it's very, it was clear to me, very clear to me, that I think if the mayor had as much love for the city as he had for himself, he would have took it upon himself to make a different decision than he did. I understood what some of the struggles that people were going through. So I know it's a difficult position. I'm speaking for myself. I think the city can't move away from the county's administration fast enough.
Mr. Public Advocate, you may have already addressed this, so my apologies for being a bit tardy, but I know that you and I have spoken a lot about the CCRB. And so I wanted to hear once again what were some of your recommendations as we look at that, particularly within the Charter of Inja.
I think, yeah, we did mention trying to get the budget for CCRB tied to 1% of the budget for New York City Police Department to correct some of the things that we have spoken, spoken about before, and possibly considering disciplinary authority decision resting with the CCRB, not just the NYPD Commissioner. I'd be interested to try to figure out even through myself what that looks like. But I do know the fact that it all rests with just one person, the Commissioner, is a problem. And the CCRB being able to be written over time and time again is an issue. Now we have another problem with some members internally, I think, changing course from, in a way that hasn't happened before. People, it seems that, from what I've been reading and hearing from people who I know on the board, including my own appointee, there's a problem with some of the folks who would normally not side the way they are, doing, doing just the opposite. But I'm not sure what the correction for that is.
Any other questions? Commissioner Jones?
Good evening, Commissioner. Good evening. Mr. Wade, so can you help us to understand? Have you run up against situations where you're actually requesting information and not getting it, and that's the driver of the subpoena?
Yes, it, it, as you might imagine, it happens, and it's not, not unknown to the public. My relationship with the administration has probably gotten more strained as time has gone forward. I will say there are some times when they, when they do respond, so I don't want to pretend that that's something that never happens. Sometimes adding some public pressure can get folks to respond as well, but there are a number of letters that we've sent out and haven't gotten responses to. And then you have to decide how much energy do you want to put in to getting it. I think if we had an additional tool, that would make the responses maybe come a little quicker, and we wouldn't have to decide where we put the pressure and don't put the pressure. But I do want to give them some credit for responding to a number of the letters that we have.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Public Advocate. Thanks for being here today. Appreciate your support of the Knicks. My question, you know, a lot that we've talked about during these hearings are powers of appointments to various boards and commissions in New York City. I wanted to get your thoughts. Are there any boards or commissions that you feel the public advocate should, deserves a voice and appointee on, any in particular, that don't have a representative on the, from the PA's office, but should be getting one?
Can I call my policy person real quick? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, I think we've discussed them before.
So could you wait until you get to the microphone so we can hear, because there's people in Zoom also that needs to hear?
The one thing that the PA
Microphone, please, thank you.
Besides the phone?
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to go into the Board of Corrections. So in terms of the Board of Corrections reassessing, I think there are some councils where the public advocate gets a single appointment, where it might make sense to serve at, in the Amos Budsbin role for the city, have an equal appointment with the mayor in order to have more oversight of that. And I think the Board of Corrections is one of the things that we've talked about in the past.
Just to be clear, we're not asking for an increase on the members. We're just, are you suggesting that of the members that already exist, the appointment authority would lie somewhere other than the mayor? The majority, I would just say, not all of it, but majority.
Yeah, we put an example, I didn't read it for the time, but we put an example in the testimonial for the Board of Corrections, allowing the chair to be jointly appointed by the mayor and the city council rather than solely by the mayor. We also added that maybe one of them could be from the Office of the Public Advocate.
Could you say your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Veronica Avis. I'm the Chief Deputy Public Advocate for Policy in the Public Advocate's Office.
And also, I'd love to follow up with that as well. Let's do again all the other ones that we looked at and definitely follow up with you.
Thank you. I'm going back to my original line of questioning. I'm just curious, because with a subpoena, you would probably, potentially someone could not respond to it as well. You'd have to go to court. And currently, it sounds like you're able to, if you make a request and someone doesn't respond, you can also go to court to enforce that? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, you can always go to court. So it's not, the Charter doesn't say you can go to court. It just, that's the only other thing that we can do. But given a subpoena is an additional tool. I mean, people ignore things they want to ignore. But from making the request to jump into court, it would be great to have another tool that gives us some more weight, so when we ask, they do know that it's backed. Also, the Charter isn't clear about what happens, or if they have to. Or they, we had, we had another argument about this that we actually won when we tested my, my ministerial duties when it came to signing the tax, the tax assessment. We actually thankfully won that one, but it wasn't clear if we would or wouldn't. So sometimes it's worried somehow how the, how the Charter is written, what would actually happen in court. I think if there was subpoena power for it, it would actually strengthen the wording of the Charter and make it very clear that it's something that you have to respond to.
Can I, one follow up? Do you have any thoughts on, given, there's at least some public perception that giving too much power to someone like the, the Office of the Public Advocate could be abused potentially to try to go after a political rival, and that power could be abused? Do you have any thoughts on ideas for how to balance those interests, potentially competing interests? If, if, if there were to be more, you know, more enhanced tools for the public advocate, you also have ideas of other ways to curb potential conflict of interest and political ambition?
No, I think that's a very good thing to worry about, and I actually brought it up to my staff of what is that we can present. So I think it's something to be, to be thought about. Perhaps it is, has to be maybe with one of the board presidents or, or someone else. The council already has their own powers that wouldn't be there, but I could see trying to make sure that it's not abused. And so we didn't come with, with a particular answer to that, but that might be one of the recommendations that someone else could join in with asking for that, using the subpoena to request that information. But I'd also love to have further discussions of what that, what that can look like. But I think without the strengthening of it, it does task the minimum resources we have and where we're going to use our resources to make sure that we get that information.
Thank you. Commissioner Reddoo?
Thank you very much for being here today, and I can talk with a little bit of authority on correctional health, because I ran two largest correctional health systems in the country, one in Rutgers and one in Sermack in Chicago. Appointing more members is fine, but correctional health has emerged as a separate specialty by itself in the last 10 years in the country. So I think probably we should really think about appointing somebody with correctional health expertise into this correction, Board of Corrections, which would be, serve the people much better. That's my opinion. Thank you.
So if you're talking about appointing people that meet certain requirements?
Yeah, I think there must be requirement that certain board members should have correctional health specialty and expertise to be in the correctional board, that will probably help the both sides of the coin so that the people are taken care of it. Most of the problems you're encountering in correctional health are the health issues which are not, is addressed, mental health issues, other behavioral issues generally addressed correctly, and that creates a lot of problems.
So you're saying, are you saying Board of Corrections or Correctional Health?
No, no. Board of Corrections should have expertise in correctional health to be appointed to the board.
So I don't, I don't mind trying to require certain requirements for some of the appointees. I do think that you shouldn't put them in all of them, but that wouldn't change whether or not we are recommending that one of them be appointed by the public advocate or changing some of the, the powers of who gets to appoint.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir, for your testimony. Thank you, Councilwoman, also.
And I'm also honored to be here with Councilman Miguel. I want to make sure I don't get in trouble when I put on the record. Thank you. He's everybody.
All right. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to the next panel, which is, I'm going to ask for Jocelyn Strauber from DOI. Rachel Falls. Are you here, Rachel? Rachel's in. Right, come on in, please. And then we have online on Zoom, Daniel Maury, which we will read, we will hear from, but why don't we start with you? How are you?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jocelyn Strauber. I'm the Commissioner of the New York City Department of Investigation, and I want to thank all the Commission members for the opportunity tonight to discuss several proposals to strengthen the independence of our office. We are the city's inspector general that investigates corruption, fraud, waste, and abuse involving New York City government. I have four core proposals to discuss tonight, each of which would require a change in the law. First, the city charter should be amended to expand and strengthen the controls around the mayor's authority to remove the DOI Commissioner. Under current law, the mayor may do so unilaterally after making a statement of reasons for the termination, and after the DOI Commissioner has an opportunity to respond. This process is intended to reduce the risk of removal for an improper purpose, but the Charter does not currently require that removal be for cause, and like I said, it allows the mayor to act unilaterally. The law should be amended to add two additional requirements. First, a requirement that removal be for cause only. And second, a requirement that the city council approve any removal. Second, the Charter should establish a tenure of five or seven years for the DOI Commissioner so that the Commissioner's term would span administrations, thereby limiting the risk that a DOI Commissioner would be subject to the improper influence or retaliation by any mayoral administration. Third, DOI should be afforded budget independence to reduce the risk of City Hall or City Council interference or retaliation against DOI through control of the agency's budget and staffing. DOI has done some preliminary analysis regarding the best model for an independent, independent budget, and generally have concluded that an appropriate budget would be best established by determining our budget as a percentage of the city's budget, not a novel approach in the oversight space. Using the fiscal 2026 executive budget Using the fiscal 2026 executive budget as a starting point, our preliminary analysis is that DOI should be funded at approximately seven to eight one-hundredths of one percent of the city's budget. That is point oh seven to point oh eight percent of the more than 115 billion that the city plans on spending next year, which in our view is a modest investment in absolute terms and relatively to the value that DOI provides. Equally important, we propose that statutory language be included to explicitly protect DOI's ability to spend within its budget in the best interest of the agency, including as to hiring, salary, promotion, and OTPS expenditures without external approvals. Fourth, the charter should be amended to codify some of the provisions and authorities currently granted to DOI through mayoral executive orders. In particular, the commission should consider codification of city employees' affirmative obligation to report corruption to DOI, the consolidation of all agencies' inspectors general within the DOI, and our unrestricted access to agency data and records. We would welcome the opportunity to work with the commission on these charter amendments to update the language of existing mayoral executive orders so as to appropriately align them with our current structure and needs. Thank you.
Thank you. If you may.
Good evening, members and staff of the Charter Commission. My name is Rachel Falls. I'm the Senior Policy Advisor for Reinvent Albany. We advocate for more transparent and accountable government in New York. We thank the commission and its staff for its preliminary report, in particular, its focus on strengthening oversight agencies. Our testimony, largely the written testimony, will dig deeper into ethics oversight and drawing from some research we conducted regarding other municipalities and supporting recommendations from the Department of Investigation. We understand that the commission has limited time and resources, and staff recommended against proposing voting reforms at this time, largely due to preclearance and preemption concerns. We do not believe the same issues apply to campaign finance, however, and ask the commission to propose independent expenditure reforms. The 2025 New York City mayoral election is seeing the largest ever amount of spending by IEs. The Fix the City PAC has raised a whopping $8.7 million as of writing this testimony, blowing all past IEs out of the water. This level of spending threatens the city's robust public matching system because IE disclosures and penalties are not keeping up with the scale and speed of spending. Without meaningful penalties, fines are simply a cost of doing business. In both areas, independent ethics oversight and independent expenditure reform, we ask the commission to propose the best reforms possible to prepare for the worst. Democratic norms, the rule of law, and the institutions that work to promote these ideals are being eroded every day, and it is crucial that New York City make its oversight agencies as strong as possible. So we urge the commission to do five things. One, advance a ballot proposal creating a New York City Independent Ethics Commission, learning from best practices in other municipalities. Two, protect the Conflicts of Interest Board and Department of Investigation with independent budgeting. I think the council member Brewer's point about there's other bodies, like the DOI component for schools, we would support that as well. Three, increase independence of the Department Investigation Commissioner. We support the reforms that the commissioner just outlined. Four, propose a two-step removal mechanism for the mayor with voter approval. Our colleagues at Citizens Union have advanced a proposal that we support where the council would hold a hearing and then subsequent to that hearing and a finding by the council, it would advance to the voters for a special removal election. We think that helps to address concerns about recall elections while providing a more thorough due process mechanism in the charter. And lastly, we support expanding penalties to even as much as 15 times the amount of illegal spending for improper coordination and improving disclosure for independent expenditure committees. We note the fairly historic action by the Campaign Finance Board to take away $600,000 of public matching funds because of coordination between Fix the City PAC and the Cuomo Campaign. That was only possible because he was a participant in the public matching system. If he weren't, that wouldn't have happened, so there need to be penalties in other areas. My testimony has some charts and some, a table about other cities, and hope you find it helpful as you develop your final recommendations.
Plenty of questions, but let me, as for the last member of the panel, Daniel Maury, Maury, online, if you can start your testimony now, please.
Hi, thank you so much. Unrelated, very much so to what my other panel members have said, although very interesting. I'm here actually just to speak about the Civic Engagement Commission and the citywide participatory budgeting process. So good afternoon to everybody. Thank you so much to the New York City Commission to strengthen democracy, and thank you for all your work. So my testimony is about the impact of the New York City Engagement Commission, the People's Money, which I'll refer to as Citywide PB. I'm on the Board of Legal Women Voters, and the League has been a participatory budgeting partner since its start, in, launch in 2022. We've been holding idea generation sessions, and we've held also, we've been participating in the balloting efforts. Our outreach has included middle and high schools, assisted living facilities, English language learners and new New Yorkers, visually impaired students, CUNY undergrad and graduate students, communities at settlement houses, and a range of nonprofit organizations. For Phase Three voting, we've also canvassed at many parks, green markets, public meetings, and street fairs. We have thoroughly enjoyed the process and have seen firsthand the impact Citywide PB has on participants, including the positive impact on our members and our volunteers. We've also been impressed with how the CEC has intentionally refined the process each year, taking input from partners and working to enhance it. I'd like to briefly share with you some of the takeaways we had in the following areas, and there's more in the written testimony, the impact on participants, the benefit for our organization, and the highlights of working with the CEC. Mostly, I'll focus on the impact on participants. First and foremost, it's a thoughtfully structured, it's, Citywide PB is thoughtfully structured to encourage participants to identify problems and then come up with ways to address them. Being in the room during an idea generation session yields awareness of thoughts and concerns in New Yorkers who might not otherwise be engaged or be heard. But importantly, the process also empowers participants to come up with solutions. And I detail examples in the testimony, including students talking about housing availability and how even at high school, they're concerned about not being able to stay in the city where they grew up. And what they did is they proposed a workshop on housing access, and it was one of the winning ideas the first year, the launch year. And when I went back to the high school, those students were so excited to know that they had suggested something and that it had won and that it had been funded. Whether any of these ideas ultimately will become winning ideas or even make the ballots, they have been formally captured and are useful input for governing. Additionally, PB engages people directly in the process of local government, and it helps people understand what happens on charter revisions, because I explained to them how it came to be. And people also learn about the city budget process. And in closing, I will say, they learn about the total city budget and how it's allocated, and to be honest, they are always surprised and often frustrated that the amount allocated for Citywide PB projects is only $5 million out of a, out of a budget of over $100 billion. We also, as an organization, have really enjoyed our expansion of partnerships. And again, I can say in the CEC, I comment directly on some specific things and where they're really receptive and they work great with the partners. So thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I think one of the hardest things that we do is panels like today, that there's so much, so many questions. I think we could spend an hour and a half just talking about DOI or about your proposals for campaign finance reform, but I want to start with you, Commissioner of DOI, because I think you've, you heard by my earlier opening remarks about one of the areas that we'd like to, to explore is the idea of independent agencies to do their job, whether it's funding resources, also the ability to remove the person who's there, who ultimately is one of the biggest exercises of democracy that you could have, right? So one of the recommendations you made was that the appointment be made for 10 years. I think that's-
Five to seven.
Okay. Well, maybe it was my-
Not quite 10.
I think I was hoping you went to 10. But, okay, notwithstanding that, who would then do the appointment? If not the mayor, if not the council, who would you envision to do the formal appointment and/or removal, right, we caused? You mentioned the mayor plus the council with approval. Who would do the appointment?
So we're not proposing changes to the current appointment process. We're only proposing changes to the timing. So for example, if you started this proposal with, let's say, the incoming administration in 2026, the commissioner who was appointed by that administration would have a five-to-seven year term, depending on, on what determination was made by this body, if this is going to be something you propose, which means that it would be either, we don't know who the next mayor will be or therefore how long their term will be, but they, with the approval of the city council that holds a hearing as part of the confirmation process, would still be proposing, appointing the new DOI commissioner. It's just that the term would run beyond that mayor's term potentially. Now, if you have a mayor who's serving two terms, they would, you know, at the time that the DOI commissioner's term had ended, it would be up to that mayor if they wanted to reappoint them or if they wanted to remove them, which I think, you know, we haven't worked through every permutation of this, but I think removal would need to be for cause in that event as well. But the fundamentals of the appointment process wouldn't change. The commissioner would be appointed by the mayor and then subject to city council confirmation. The real change here, as you said, is to the removal process, which would now also require the approval of the city council and would need to be for cause.
All right, we got a lot of questions. Why don't we start to my right?
Thank you. Commissioner, I wanted to ask you a question about removal. And you stated the conditions or the ways in which removal would occur. And I, my question is, just, just want to sort of dig deep into, dig a little deeper into what is prompting that? That is, to what extent have you seen issues, problems, abuses that you want, you want to see addressed? Has there been a history of that? Or is it more that you see a gap in the charter and want to fill that gap? And I guess my accompanying question is, it just went out of my head. But when it, when it comes to removal, okay, why would, what's the rationale for the DOI commissioner having more protections than, than other commissioners?
Sure. So I think the, the big picture rationale for, the DOI commissioner already has more protection than other commissioners, right? Because the mayor has to give a statement of reasons to which the commissioner can respond. And to, to get to the first part of your question, what we've identified, I think, is a vulnerability or a risk. It's not a historical issue of abuse. It's certainly not any indication of any current abuse. I want to make that clear. There's been no, you know, threats of removal of any kind by this administration, and obviously the commission is aware of, you know, the, the significant work that we've done that at times you could certainly say placed us at odds with the mayor. So what we're really addressing is a risk. I think when you look at the statute, you see that if a mayor were to decide for an improper purpose to remove the commissioner, the mayor would have to provide a statement of reasons that the commissioner could respond to. And depending on what those reasons were and how plausible they were, there might be public pressure of some kind on the mayor to sort of step back from that position. But there is no other body that provides a check at the city council level or any other level, and no legal basis that I'm aware of to prevent the mayor from removing the commissioner for any reason, as long as he made a statement of those reasons. Now, certainly, the current law is intended, I think, to ensure that removal would only be for a proper basis and perhaps contemplates that the mayor, whoever the mayor was, would not make a public statement of reasons that was implausible or improper. But I think there is a gap there, and I think ultimately, were a mayor to try to do that for an improper purpose, the statute is much less protective, the charter is much less protective than it might immediately appear. So that's the basis for the proposal.
Okay. Thank you to all the panelists for the testimony. I have a question for Commissioner Strauber. Thank you. So I couldn't agree more with the independence of the budget and removal, but one of the things you mentioned that I would love to hear more about is this idea of unrestricted access to information. Can you tell us more about what you're proposing and why?
And sure, to be clear, that, that is not a change in sort of the current law when you look at the mayoral executive orders. So by executive order, DOI has access on request and at times, you know, where we can do so covertly, covertly to any city record that we wish to review for any, you know, investigative purpose. We also have access to any city employee to interview them, and we can conduct compelled interviews again for any investigative purpose. What we're identifying here is that those authorities are the feature of mayoral executive orders, which while they have, you know, been consistently in place for many years, in theory could be changed. So if we're, by, you know, by a mayor, again, for any reason, subject only perhaps to the public pressure of restricting DOI's authorities, you know, for an improper or a seemingly improper purpose. And so as we're, you know, thinking about ways to strengthen the agency, that is one way to further strengthen it would be to codify those authorities in the city charter as opposed to making them subject to an executive order that could be changed, or I should say, protected only by being part of an executive order that could be changed.
Thanks. Can I follow up quickly? So, and would, when unrestricted access, so codifying, I understand what you're saying about you wouldn't have to rely on the current mayor to continue that executive order, but does unrestricted access mean that DOI could access information without, you know, the custodian of that information knowing? Would there be an ability for agencies or subjects of the inquiry, inquiry to like review for privilege, or is this a, a way to get around that?
So DOI is within the city's privilege, so we can receive city privileged information. We can't waive the city's privilege. So for example, if we're preparing reports, we have to be mindful that we can't, you know, reveal privileged information without the approval of the agency. Our, our current access, yes, can in certain circumstances include, you know, covert access of a kind that, that a city employee would not necessarily know about, other types of access. And to some extent, this depends on the systems that we're dealing with. We need to go to the agency to ask for information. That's not a feature of the law or the executive orders. It's simply a feature of sort of how the information is housed and held and whether as a practical matter, we can access it covertly or not.
Sorry, one more quick, just because in terms of the privilege issue, how does that play out if you have different branches of government? So if you're appointed, it's not you, but the commissioner that is appointed by the mayor, and potentially, does that mean they could have unrestricted access to other branches of government information and those potentially privileged pieces of information through what you're proposing?
I'm not totally sure I'm understanding what you mean by other branches of government. I mean, for example, we, we oversee and conduct investigations involving the city council, but we don't have the kind of access to city council records that would enable us to obtain privileged information in that context. Certain, certain of our access is restricted, so we don't have access to certain types of law department communications, at least not without, you know, having a dialogue about that. So we really deal with this on a case-by-case basis. We take a very conservative approach to ensure that in the investigations that we conduct, we're not ever disclosing or at risk of disclosing privileged information unless it's clear that there's going to be a waiver by the relevant agency.
All right, one second, Commissioner. I, I believe there, there were questions on this side as well. So would you? Go ahead.
My question's for Rachel, and it's probably pretty quick. The, the current law that requires disclosure by independent expenditures of their top three donors was passed by the city council as local law. Do you feel like any of the recommendations that you've made here regarding independent expenditures could be handled the same way? Because the commission is always trying to avoid places where the, the solution could be legislated.
I think because of the moment we're in and the experience we're having with the election, there's certainly, it's timely. I think, you know, it, it could potentially be done by local law, but I think that there's a good reason to do it and put the, or certainly have the commission report, explore it as an issue that needs to be addressed. We would encourage you to do it via charter. You know, it is an issue of democracy in many ways, and the voters, having them weigh in on it, I think, is powerful.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Commissioner. You mentioned in your testimony two items I was hoping you could elaborate more on. One was the, you know, no external approvals for hiring, so more detail on that. And also just what you meant by the consolidation of- And also just what you meant by the consolidation of Inspector Generals, the DOI Inspector General and the agencies.
So to start with the first one. Currently, the way our office is structured, we have, depending on how you counted, 13 or 14 squads, and each squad oversees an agency or group of agencies. And each inspector general works physically within, you know, the confines of the DOI building with, you know, a couple exceptions occasionally, and reports up through our chain to the DOI commissioner. That is the product of a mayoral executive order that dates back, I think, to the 70s or 80s. Before that, and someone will correct me if I'm getting the date wrong. And before that, there was a dual, and this is actually in my written testimony, which I had to, you know, which I shrunk down so I could fit within three minutes. But before that executive order, each of the inspectors generals sort of sat physically within their home agencies and had a dual reporting chain to the DOI commissioner and to their agency head. And I think the concern that prompted the executive order was that really limited their ability to provide robust and independent oversight. It was a concern about them being too tied to their quote unquote "home" agency. So that consolidation is the status quo. But again, the status quo by virtue of a mayoral executive order, not a charter mandate. And that's the reason for raising it here. The second issue relating to the budget, you know, we, like any other city agency, are subject to OMB approval for all of our hiring, promotions, raises, even when we are doing so within our existing budget. So I'm not talking about like requests for new headcount. And as I think every agency has experienced, you know, maybe particularly in the current budget environment, getting that approval is a time consuming and laborious process. It can cause us to lose, you know, excellent candidates who simply can't wait long enough for confirmation that their conditional offer will be approved by OMB. So if, you know, as we urge the commission to take up the issue of budget independence, if we're going to truly have budget independence, we have to have full control over our own hiring.
Great, just a quick follow up. Thank you, that was really helpful on both items. On the consolidation, my question similar to what was asked before, is this a gap in the existing law? Or have there been cases where potentially a mayor has tried to interfere with that chain of command?
I am not aware in this administration or others, although there could be historical examples, I just don't know about. I'm not aware of interference. Again, I'm not aware of any kind of, you know, current threat. This is simply a recognition that certain critical aspects of how we're structured could be revised, you know, at the will of a mayor for any reason. Again, subject only to whatever public pressure might exist, not to interfere with the way we work. And so as we think about what is the best way to fully strengthen this agency, I think solidifying those aspects of our structure would be important.
Sorry, one last follow up. Do you think that the Inspector Generals should deserve the same type of removal protections that you're advocating for the DOI commissioner?
That is a very interesting question. We have not been concerned that there is a vulnerability there. And the DOI, so you're really contemplating the risk of the mayor or someone in the administration sort of reaching into the organization beyond the commissioner? I would like to give that some additional thought, but I have to say, you know, we control, obviously, the selection, the hiring, the promotion of folks to the inspector general roles, as well as, you know, in the rare occasion when it might be appropriate, removal. I don't know that more protection like that is required, but I can certainly give that some more thought. It's not part of our proposal, it certainly wasn't, you know, top of mind.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Before Commissioner Agarwal.
Thanks, Commissioner Strabber, good to see you. A question, the testimony before you by the public advocate called for or requested that we impose or give him subpoena power via city charter amendment. Do you have thoughts on whether that would be a prudent use of our authority? Or it would be, sort of make sense from your perspective as, you know, the head of the city's primary oversight agency?
I would want to further study the proposal, the current authorities, the current challenges that the public advocate articulated before weighing in on that, but I don't feel prepared to address that now.
Got it, thanks.
Commissioner John.
So Commissioner, thank you. My question around hiring is, is it your sense that the delays that you have with getting approvals are unusual in the pace of the city right now?
I can't say that, no. Unfortunately, I think this is, you know, probably an issue that includes but is not limited to DOI. You know, obviously, given our unique role, we find this particularly challenging, but I'm sure other commissioners sitting here would say the same. So I don't think it's unique to us, no.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the time is a problem. I would have had a few questions for you, Rachel, as well, but I think we're going to move on. I appreciate all your testimony, thank you. And for future, the commission, we still have about 12 people to testify. So if you can kindly limit your questions and not keep continuing, because otherwise, we're not going to allow people who are otherwise online to testify to do so. Thank you so much. Let me call the next panel. Councilwoman Pierina Sanchez is online. Is she?
Yes, hello?
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. Could you start your testimony, please?
Thank you, thank you. Co-chairs Garrido and Rice, members of the commission. My name is Pierina Sanchez, the city council member representing the 14th district in the Bronx, home to the neighborhoods of Kingsbridge, Fordham, University Heights, and Mount Hope, and chair of the New York City Council's Committee on Housing and Buildings. I want to first commend the commission for its focus. In your preliminary staff report on two critical issues, excuse me, getting over something. Two issues, fair housing and community planning. These areas will be the focus of my testimony tonight and are near and dear to my heart. My staff convinced me it was important for me to share a bit of my background, so I will. I was born and raised in a community now that I now represent, a community that faces significant housing challenges on nearly every level. From my childhood in the West Bronx to now serving as city council member, I've held several roles that have given me the perspective I hold today on matters of housing and land use. I served for four years as the New York Director of Regional Plan Association, where I authored the Inclusive City Report, focused on equitable planning and land use strategies, as well as pushed out a regional analysis of housing displacement risk and residential segregation. In my own community of the West Bronx, I co-founded the Jerome Avenue Revitalization Collaborative, or JARC, in response to the Jerome Avenue rezoning, during which I served on Bronx Community Board Five. And in its seven years of existence, JARC's task has been twofold, to ensure implementation of the rezonings, points of agreement, and to advance inclusive growth along the Jerome Corridor. In my time at City Hall during the de Blasio administration, I negotiated several rezonings, including the Bay Street Corridor Neighborhood Plan in Staten Island and a number of smaller projects throughout the five boroughs. And finally, in my first four years as council members, I've championed the bold steps that we need to take to confront the housing crisis, including supporting the City of Yess zoning tax amendment in tandem with $5 billion in City for All investments that the council secured and is working with the administration to implement. I mention all of this to ground my testimony in the experiences that have spanned many sides of the land use process, as a community advocate, a planner, a city hall negotiator, and now as an elected official. Tonight, I would like to offer my perspective on land use reforms to the city charter that will bring us closer to a just city, where all New Yorkers, regardless of background, have the opportunity to put down roots and call this place home. I sincerely hope that this commission will think big as it considers structural reform and that you do so with faith in New Yorkers, faith that when equipped with the right tools, when treated with respect by their city government, our neighbors can be invaluable partners in planning for our collective future. First, the commission should consider charter reforms that build upon the Speaker's Fair Housing Framework. Passed in December of 2023, this legislation is an important step toward addressing a striking inequity. In the past decade, just 10 council districts, including mine, have built more than the other 41 combined. That is unacceptable. For far too long, the same neighborhoods have been asked to bear the entire city's burden. While citywide tax amendments are an important step, they should pursue, we should pursue changes to the system that ensure that every community does its part. The framework requires, starting next year, actually, that the city set five-year housing targets for each of our 59 community districts. These targets are to be incorporated into the city's fair housing plan and are accompanied with a strategic equity framework that will identify barriers to ensuring that every community contributes their fair share of housing and affordable housing. Setting targets is a good baseline, but what comes next? What happens if a community district consistently does not reach its targets? What happens to those that do? What combination of carrots and sticks can the city establish to incentivize compliance? How can we empower communities to chart their own path to reaching their housing targets? To allow the city's fair housing framework to reach its full potential, the commission should again consider a charter mechanism that gives the framework teeth. Some kind of enforceability or expedited review for districts that fall short of meeting their fair share. If very little, if very little new housing is being built in an area, not because of market conditions, but because of a refusal to approve even a modest number of new homes, our land use process must be able to solve for that scenario. Similarly, the commission should consider whether existing community planning tools in the charter can be better integrated with the fair housing framework so that districts who want to meet their targets are empowered to do so through planning, not just zoning.
As a woman, if you can summarize the testimony, because we're way past.
Sure, okay. Okay, two more points. The second point is that the commission should consider charter reforms that allow for accelerated review process for projects that are, one, 100% affordable and target neighborhood level incomes; two, fall below a certain density threshold and are disincentivized through ULEURP today; and three, align with an adopted community plan. And finally, I'm just going to skip down. There was a lot that I'm not saying, but finally, I want to say that our city often engages in piecemeal planning across agencies. The commission should revisit the idea of implementing a comprehensive planning framework like the one considered in the 2019 Charter Revision Commission that aligns with existing plans and centers fair housing, racial, economic health, and climate justice, and is grounded in robust community engagement. A comprehensive plan with enforceable district-level targets would also help ease the burden on the ULEURP process and reduce the outsized influence of NIMBYism in blocking projects that can benefit our broader city. Thank you, commissioners, for your time and attention to these critical issues.
Thank you for your testimony. I know there's going to be questions. I'm going to ask you one, because we've heard ample testimony throughout the boroughs regarding the ULEURP process. Whether you're, will you think the current ULEURP process works? I'd love to hear your opinion.
Whether I think it works?
Yes, whether you think the current ULEURP process, as it is defined now, works.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the question. So in part of, when I worked at Regional Plan Association, we did a look at the 50 states and municipalities across the country, and what are their processes for approving or, you know, changing, making changes to their land use regulations? And what we concluded was that ULEURP is actually the best, because it is predictable, seven months, you know, that's when it starts, that's when it ends, and different stages that allow for input by many. Just because it's the best doesn't mean that it's working or that it's great. And that's what I always say is that unfortunately, the bar is low. So I think that the good things about ULEURP, the clock, the timeframe, we should hold on to. But the bad things about ULEURP, including how much pressure ULEURP puts on just one council member, it's not a matter of statute or law that we have member deference in the city council and that we've had it for so long. It's a matter of culture, and it's a matter of pressure. And that pressure is created because ULEURP is like the one time that communities get to weigh in into land use decisions in the city. So that's why I remain a proponent of comprehensive planning, to relieve that pressure and create a sort of container in which we're planning for land use decisions in the city of New York. And then when there's, you know, exceptional projects or, you know, specific changes that should be considered, that's when ULEURP comes into play. Because right now, we're a city that does a lot of individual bite-sized zoning and individual bite-sized planning in some ways, but not one that thinks comprehensively and allows for the public to chime in into the bigger picture.
Thank you. We've also heard a lot about, a lot of projects stuck in pre-cert in the process. What is your take?
Yeah, I've been through two, and now I'll say three, because as council member is my third. I've been through two and now three really great pre-certification processes. One was the Greater East Midtown rezoning, when I was at RPA, or called GEM, that rezoned the Midtown area. The second was the East Harlem Project in Speaker Mark Viverito's district at the time. And now is the Kingsbridge Armory redevelopment. And what's great about these three examples is that they had really robust community engagement before certification, right? So you kind of get all of the grievances and concerns and fears, and even NIMBYism, all of it. You get that up at the front before certification and before the seven-month process of ULEURP, so that when you go through ULEURP, you're kind of, you know, you're not getting any surprises, right? And the way that each of these three processes, GEM, East Harlem rezoning, and then Kingsbridge, the way that they work is that they were happening at the same time as, you know, the city plannings, you know, convoluted. I will agree on criticisms to that extent. Convoluted pre-cert process, there was a lot of community engagement happening at the same time. So that's what I would, you know, recommend as a really important component of thinking about how to fix pre-cert is to incorporate and encourage and maybe resource, right? I'm talking about comprehensive planning, so maybe we don't have to do it in pre-cert. But if we don't get comprehensive planning in pre-cert, doing a lot more robust community engagement to shape what gets certified and then have a smoother process during those seven months.
Thank you. Commissioner Past.
Thank you, Councilman Member Sanchez. And you have been a both a thought and an action leader on land use, and I have a lot of questions I could ask you. But I know the chair will get aggravated if I ask more than one. So I'm going to focus in on the comprehensive plan proposal you said. And I guess my question fundamentally is sort of two parts. One is like, in short, like, what do you think the major advantage is of comprehensive plan? But my real question is, you know, what, how you think the words, assuming we could do it, the words we would put on paper in the charter would actually force people to think longer term? Or not force, maybe encourage, force or encourage people to think longer term when, for whatever reason, maybe they're not doing it now? My fear is that we would sort of go down this road, but it wouldn't, you know, and get the words in the charter, but it wouldn't change anything. And so I guess your thoughts on that?
Yeah. And sorry, just to make sure I understood, the first question is the advantages?
Yeah, like why comprehensive plan is important, yeah.
Oh, absolutely. So we have amazing civil servants at many agencies that are conducting all kinds of plans, right? We have a Streets Master Plan, and the School Construction Authority has their five-year capital plan. And, you know, the DHS is constantly doing sightings, and the list goes on, right? The DOT is, well, I said the Streets Master Plan. So there's a lot of planning happening across the city of New York, but it isn't necessarily synchronized, right? So, you know, in some ways, right, and the devil's in the details and how you operationalize something like a comprehensive plan in a city of nine million. But just on theory, it's aligning these plans and making sure that they are not happening within agencies without, you know, any sort of public, meaningful public input, right? Because, you know, it's mostly wonks who are looking at what exactly is, right? Like the few people, unfortunately, who will attend a council hearing where we're talking about the SEAs capital plan, for instance, right? Um, so having, having a central place where we are accountable to the alignment of all of these plans that are happening. Um, and allows us to identify deficits in, in, um, in a more comprehensive way, right? About fair share and fair housing and, and everything else, right? Um, so I, I think that's the major advantage. And then forcing people to think long-term, if we were able to codify, uh, comprehensive planning and putting, put it on a time cycle, let's say ten years, that's, that's what the two thousand and nineteen commission, um, tossed around a lot. I think we, we would force people to, to think about at least, you know, for, for those next ten years and then the subsequent ten years uh, versus one agency that might be on a five-year time scale and another agency that might be on a ten-year and et cetera, right? So I think it's, it's fundamentally about alignment, um, alignment across plans. And importantly, what I said in my testimony is relieving the pressure off U L E R. You know, I think in the last few months, um, we've heard a lot of criticisms about the, or I mean, it's, it's kind of a mainstay, but I've heard it a lot as a council member now, um, over the last few months about the power of an individual council member to potentially thwart a, a project that the city needs, right? Um, and if we had, uh, if we had sort of a, a larger container that, that we could reference, you know, it would, it wouldn't just be up to the council member and, and necessarily that community to say, this is why we absolutely don't want this, but they have that, they have to then also reference, and we all have to, to reference, especially if we can get teeth on a comp plan, right? Um, we have to re- reference the broader picture and why is it worth going against?
Sorry, we, we're gonna have to, um, for the sake of time, we appreciate your testimony. Thank you. We might have additional questions for you, uh, at a later moment. Do you have questions? But we certainly, it is six forty-five and we still have a lot of folks that wanna testify, and we have a limited time. So thank you for your testimony today, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to the next panel, and this is an in-person panel. Stephanie Basel, Ashley Santiago, uh, Conrad, and, uh, I believe Francis Get, uh, Get, Getwell, Getellus, also on Zoom? Or is it, uh, Ms. Santiago's on Zoom, I believe, right? So is Stephanie Basel here? Would you come forward, please? Is Francis Getellus here? Francis, would you mind coming forward, please? And then, and then after those two in-person, our attention to Ashley Santiago Conrad on Zoom, so, um, we'll be right with you, Ms. Santiago. Stefan?
Hi.
Is that you name?
Yes, Stephanie Bazelle, yes.
Bazelle?
Bazelle.
Please forgive me.
No, it's no problem. Hi, I am Stephanie Bazelle. I'm the Senior Policy Attorney with New York County Defender Services. Um, in our written testimony, we dig into-
Can you get the microphone a little closer to you for the people on, online?
Yes, absolutely. Um, I'm Stephanie Bazelle, Senior Policy Attorney with New York County Defender Services. In our written testimony, we dig into the necessary expanded authority and functions for the Board of Corrections that I all highlighted here. Rikers is so horrific, decrepit and brutal that two independent commissions have determined it must shut down forever. The court has taken away the power from the city for its failures. Lest we think the receivership will save us, we should learn from other jurisdictions that have failed when the receivership ended and the appropriate infrastructure was not established. For the B O C, we need to require quarterly visits to facilities. How can someone rule on conditions of confinement without seeing what's inside? Right now, men are being housed in women's facilities. No one knows how this is working because Rikers is a complete black box. We need to conduct periodic visit, reports on visitors. Many surveyed and by advocates report being sexually abused while visiting and being searched, cavity searched in complete contravention with the law. People will tell their families not to visit because it's so excruciating when this is their biggest lifeline. We need annual inspection reports as some measure of accountability. Most importantly, we need to allow the B O C to serve as some check on the mayor's emergency powers and to limit the mayor's veto powers. Our current mayor has shown that unchecked executive powers over jails, a male can, mayor can thwart the very mission of the B O C. Since the beginning of the Adams administration, despite the B O C's directive for a safer and more humane jails, Rikers has worsened. The U S District Laura Swain has found the city in contempt for failing to comply with eighteen separate court order provisions concerning security, staffing, supervision, use of force. In two particularly illustrative examples, one was Executive Order six twenty-four and six twenty-five to suspend the implementation of Local Law Forty-two legislative, legislation that would have curbed solitary confinement and other abusive practices in our jail system. This was put into law by the city council, and then it was vetoed by the mayor. Then it was completely overturned in a democratic deliberative process, and then he used his executive powers to essentially put in an emergency action that would overturn that overturning of the veto, which is completely undemocratic. We cannot allow that to stand just because that is that person's personal views, that they should not have solitary confinement. That is not allowed. And then again, this was done with Executive Order fifty, except perhaps even worse, because it was done so that it was for this own person's own personal gain. And so because of that, we ask that you limit his emergency powers and limit the veto powers of the mayor.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fran-, uh, Dr. Francis Getellus. I'm a clinical psychologist, and I also am a member of the Jails Action Coalition and the Halt Solitary Campaign. So I played a role in, uh, getting the limitation or elimination of solitary confinement. Uh, laws passed both on the state and city level, and I testify frequently before the Board of Corrections. Um, I, my colleagues have already, uh, submitted, I think a number of them have testified about the ways in which the functioning of the Board of Corrections must be, uh, given more strength, more authority, and it includes, uh, funding and staffing and issues like that. So I won't go into those details. I'll just attach it to my testimony when I send it in. But there are two issues that I would like to, uh, stress. Uh, having to do with people who are in the city jails who don't belong there. The first group is the people with mental health problems, serious mental health problems. They are fifty-seven percent of the people in custody, and that is just outrageous. And it is partly because of, um, our policies, which don't exist for the care of the mentally ill. In the fifties through the eighties, there was a huge movement for deinstitutionalization. And when that finally came to be and the, uh, hospitals were closed, there was a promise that they would have a substitution of mental health facilities, community-based, that would be more able to be helpful to the people. But they never kept that promise. That was, in, turned out to have been a lie. Uh, and instead, what has happened is that the mentally ill are two places. They're in our jails and they're on the streets homeless. And we have to do something about that, and I'm asking this board to figure out how to do it. Whether it's setting up a group that will take the responsibility to start the process. If you can do that, I would love to see that happen. The other group that doesn't belong there are people who are awaiting trial. And in some cases, they're a large number, by the way. In some cases, they have been there for four or three or four years at least. And again, that is outrageous. It's so contrary to our concept of democracy. I, I remember being taught that, uh, you're innocent until proven guilty. And, uh, the other thing was you're entitled to a speedy trial. Clearly, we are not meeting our obligation, and I would like you to take that issue on as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your-
And thanks for letting me testify.
Thank, thank you for your testimony. Um, Ms. Santiago Conrad on Zoom, if you like, uh, can you start your testimony, please?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you so much, Commissioner, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. Um, again, my name is Ashley Santiago Conrad. I am, uh, the Senior Community Organizer at Freedom Agenda, and I'm also a member of the campaign opposed Rikers Island and a proud native New Yorker. For the past thirty-two years, I've watched this city port and an overwhelmingly number of resources into agencies like the Department of Corrections, an agency that in my view has its, has embedded itself into the city, uh, like a cancer, honestly. Um, unaccountable, unchecked, and uninterested in reform. And this issue is deeply personal to me. My nephew spent two and a half years on Rikers Island pre-trial detained, um, all while, uh, he needed support, rehabilitation, care, um, and instead what he got was two, uh, three and a half years of, um, violence, trauma and neglect. My nephew was diagnosed with disruptive mood dysregulation disorder, D M D D, and is also on the autism spectrum. Uh, his time on Rikers only compounded his condition rather than providing the treatment or support that he so desperately deserved and needed. Uh, the horrors that he experienced there are hard to even describe out loud. Um, from being stabbed, being, um, jumped by uniform staff and sometimes other incarcerated individuals, and also left in solitary confinement for days at a time. He had door neglect as well as physical and emotional harm, mostly at the hands of the Department of Corrections staff. The horrors, uh, one of the most disturbing incidents was when a malfunctioning cell door slammed shut on his finger, completely severing the top portion of his thumb. Instead of being taken to a hospital immediately, he was left in pain and untreated. To make matters worse, the Department of Corrections failed to take him to his follow-up medical appointment, and as a result, the tip of my nephew's finger turned black, died, and eventually fell off. He is now permanently disfigured, and this is all because of the department's gross negligence. Throughout all of this, my family did everything we could. We called three-one-one. We reached out to the Board of Corrections. We filed complaints. We testified at city council hearings and at Board of Corrections hearings, and we pleaded for action, but our efforts were repeatedly met with silence, delay, or indifference. It wasn't that the Board of Correction didn't care, it's that they didn't have the capacity, the teeth, or the independence to make real charge, or change, rather. If the Board of Corrections did take forceful actions around conditions on Rikers, they could easily face retaliation in the form of budget cuts, and that's the kind of backward system we're dealing with at the moment. No meaningful intervention took place until we brought city council members into the equation and sometimes even the office of the public advocate. But that's a role that the Board of Correction should have been able to play all along for my nephew and the thousands of people who are suffering right now on our, in our city jails. Uh, we truly need an independent oversight body, one with no ties to the mayor's office, no risk of political retaliation, and a clear mandate to ensure minimum standards in our city jails are upheld. We need a Board of Correction with authority, funding, and independence to do its job, and we need to prioritize that work because lives are on the line every single day. To bring about that reality, we recommend changes to the city charters to guarantee the Board of Correction, a budget that's at least one percent of the Department of Correction, a board in which the members have relevant experience and no more than one-third of them, the members are appointed by the member, and where the chair is chosen jointly by the mayor and the speaker of city council. And a board that we can take action to close housing units and jails and order the people who are on Rikers now be released when minimum standards are consistently violated. Thank you so much, and my full recommendations are in my submitted testimony.
Thank you all three for your, uh, testimony. Are there any questions from the commission? I have one. Now, I mean, I think we've heard this discussion about increasing the number of members of the Board of Correction, increasing its budget and its independence from the mayor. I think for the first time I heard from Ms. Santiago Conrad the idea that it would be jointly and not with consent. Um, it, part of the problem is you, you need to appoint someone, right? And, and so if the idea is allowing the Board of Correction to be completely independent, can either one of the three of you suggest whether you feel that independence being that the Board of Corrections leadership should not be appointed by the mayor, first question, and two, if not, by whom?
I can go ahead. Um, I think that the mayor, uh, should, um, have appointment powers, but I think that appointment power should be shared, uh, like I mentioned, with either the Speaker of City Council or city council itself. Um, so that there are, uh, equal amount of folks who serve different interests on the, on the Board of Corrections itself with different, um, you know, like perspectives, as well as what we see in the form of budget cuts or retaliation. There's, uh, different bodies who need that appointee and also pass it back to Stephanie.
Yeah, no, I would say, um, I don't think it should be, uh, solely the mayor. I think it should be, um, I think they should choose from a pool of candidates who are selected the same way the mayor is choosing from, uh, candidates selected by, uh, the Judicial Department. Uh, like the commission from the Judicial Department selects, he selects, uh, a few candidates from the commission. There should be, um, some sort of, uh, selection commission from which, uh, maybe jointly the public advocate, the city council, and the mayor choose one person. Like from four candidates, choose one person.
Thank you.
And, uh, you had the discussion earlier with the public advocate when he was here, and he said that at the moment he does not have, uh, an appointment in the role, and that that is something he thinks he would like to have and that he could be useful for. And I think he is one of the people in our document that we have in fact said might be one of the people who makes that appointment. Uh, so I would support him on that, uh, you know, as, uh.
Thank you. Com- Commissioner Raju?
I think if some opinion that it doesn't matter how many people appoint, who appoints them, and how the mechanism is, so long you stop the board with political appointees as opposed to subject matter experts, the problem will continue. I think probably you should really see to think about including subject matter experts and in correctional to be in the Board of Corrections, rather than, it doesn't matter. If you keep on appointing political appointees, this problem will be the same.
I think we, we, I think we would all be in agreement with that. Um, and that's part of the recommendations that we've laid out, and that it's a problem that, that, that at, at will, the legislature can remove people who have subject matter expertise from committees right now as it stands.
And I think that one of the things-
If you could speak in the microphone, please?
In our recommendations was, uh, that when you're thinking about who's an expert on what's going on, it shouldn't only be limited to, uh, you know, political figures, but in fact, we've recommended that there be a couple of medical people with expertise in the area, but also, and this has begun to happen already, there should be people who were themselves incarcerated because they're more knowledgeable than most of us are. Or, and/or maybe, uh, family members who currently have people incarcerated. The other suggestion we've made is that, um, it be a very, um, uh, complex group of people that is, uh, that, that we consider all of the areas in which people in our culture are severely oppressed. So we want some of them to be people of color. We want some of them to be lesbian and gay people. We want some of, you know, all of these groups should be considered for membership. So this is all in the document that we prepared.
Thank, thank you all. Um, thank you for your testimony. We're gonna move on to the next panel, but thank you. Thank you, Doc. Uh, let me call now Cassandra Impaso, uh, Hassan Navid, and Brystad. Would you come to testify, please?
Uh, hello. Uh, my name is Bryce Stack, and I am the Vice President of the New York Clean Air Collective. NYCAC, as it is known, focuses on air quality in New York City, primarily via the Citizen Air Complaint Program, which allows ordinary citizens to report polluting companies via the Department of Environmental Protection. The Citizen Air Complaint Program has been extremely successful in enforcing the city's anti-idling laws, which were left essentially unenforced by city agencies for nearly fifty years before the creation of the program by the City Council in 2019. In other words, the program empowers citizens themselves to be a democratic check on an otherwise unaccountable executive branch. We are pleased that the preliminary staff report includes a solid discussion of strengthening independent oversight agencies. This discussion is located on pages eight through twelve of the preliminary report. I have three comments for the Commission regarding the oversight of city agencies. First, I respectfully suggest that the final commission report include a specific subsection on citizen enforcement, including the Citizen Air Complaint Program and the Department of Sanitation's program to report illegal dumping, both of which further the Commission's goals of ensuring democratic integrity and the balance of powers. Secondly, the New York Clean Air Collective strongly supports the addition of advice and consent provisions for nominees to lead city agencies. We believe the public deserves to have the opportunity to make their voices heard with the City Council prior to the installation of new city agency heads. I believe an advice and consent provision will force future mayors to always nominate the most qualified and experienced candidates for important positions. Lastly, I request that the Commission explore the creation of a Department of Citizen Enforcement. In this day and age, New Yorkers of all backgrounds are looking for the city to better enforce its existing laws. When, what we saw with the Citizen Air Complaint Program is that today, just six years after its creation, the amount of idling trucks and buses on our streets has decreased dramatically. I have seen this firsthand over the last few years as more and more companies have changed their behavior. To speak personally, I live in Chelsea on Eighth Avenue, and as many people in the room may know, Eighth Avenue is experiencing a humanitarian crisis. The New York Times wrote an article last year entitled, "This NYC tourist hub, Eighth Avenue, has become trash-stone chaos for everyone." It's a sad situation, but I can say with confidence that the creation of a Department of Citizen Enforcement could allow citizens, for example, to report conditions of trash in the streets so that the Department of Sanitation can resolve the issue. A Department of Citizen Enforcement could promote the programs to the public so that more citizens can learn to take charge and make reports to the city in order to solve the problems that affect them. Thank you for holding this hearing and allowing the public to testify. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening, folks. Um, thank you so much for staying a little past seven PM to hear our testimony. Good evening. My name is Hassan Navid, and I appreciate the opportunity to offer, offer testimony before this Commission. I strongly urge this body to amend the New York City Charter to grant the Civilian Complaint Review Board, the CCRB, final disciplinary authority in cases where NYPD misconduct has been substantiated. For more than a decade, I served in public service and police oversight roles in New York City. After the Department investigation, I was at the Inspector General's Office for the NYPD, and I served under two mayors at the New York City Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. I have led efforts to reform policy, strengthen institutional accountability, and confront systemic failures. Through this work, I've seen how quickly public trust collapses when systems fail to deliver real consequences for misconduct. The CCRB was created to provide meaningful civilian oversight by investigating certain categories of police misconduct and issuing discipline recommendations. But in practice, even when the CCRB substantiates wrongdoing through a thorough and independent process, its recommendations can be overridden or ignored without justification by the Police Commissioner. This unchecked authority turns what should be a transparent system of accountability into a decision-making process that can sidestep independent and credible, incredible findings by the CCRB. It undermines public trust, discredits the oversight process, and weakens the integrity of the NYPD leadership. The data is clear. Over the years, hundreds of officers have been the subject of CCRB investigations, with hundreds of cases substantiated, and yet, in a majority of those cases, no meaningful discipline followed. Substantiated misconduct, when met with inaction, sends a dangerous message that accountability is optional, and that even when the truth is established, consequences are not guaranteed. I want to acknowledge Commissioner, Police Commissioner Jessica Tisch for her leadership in modernizing parts of the NYPD and investing in tools to support oversight. But leadership changes. Policies must endure. Lasting public, lasting public trust depends on individual commitments, but on structural safeguards that ensure accountability no matter who's in charge. This is about completing the accountability process. The CCRB was never intended to make symbolic recommendations. It was created to ensure real oversight. Given disciplinary authority to the CCRB does not make it a police oversight agency that's in the outlier. It aligns it with national best practices. Cities like Washington DC, Los Angeles, San Francisco have empowered civilian oversight bodies with similar authority. This reform simply brings the CCRB in line with the other oversight, oversight standards and ensured that substantive misconduct cannot be dismissed without consequence. New Yorkers deserve a system they can trust. Officers deserve a system that's fair and consistent. This reform is not only necessary, it's long overdue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for staying a little bit late so to hear our testimony. Um, my name is Cassandra Impaso. I'm a proud New York City resident and also the Policy Director at Campaign Zero. Um, we're an organization committed to ending police and cost role violence through data-informed policy solutions. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to speak in support of critical reforms to the New York City Charter that would strengthen the Civilian Complaint Review Board, the CCRB, and restore public trust in our systems of police oversight. Right now, the CCRB is unable to carry the mandate of providing independent civilian oversight of NYPD. While its mission is to ensure accountability, it lacks the authority to enforce its decisions. Its work is often obstructed by limited access to NYPD records, long investigation delays, and a system where the Police Commissioner can't ignore or overturn its disciplinary recommendations, and in seventy percent of instances does. This undermines public trust and leaves New York City without real accountability. Simply put, the CCRB cannot fulfill its intended mission in its current form. Let's be clear. New Yorkers deserve a police accountability system that is independent, transparent, and effective. That's why we need reforms in the hands of voters through ballot measures. These changes are essential to realign oversight with public expectations, not political convenience. First, the CCRB must be independent. Today, the mayor controls nine of fifteen board appointments, creating a lopsided structure that undermines the board's independence. We propose expanding the board to twenty-one members and reforming the appointment process to limit political influence and ensure broader representation of New Yorkers. We also call for a sixty-day term limit for interim chairs. Why? Because open-ended interim appointments sidestep accountability and weaken the city council's role in governance. Currently, all board member vacancies must be filled within sixty days. We are asking that the same is applied to the chair position, the most critical of all. Second, the CCRB must have direct access to NYPD misconduct records. Currently, the NYPD controls the flow of misconduct records, meaning they determine what information is shared. It forces the CCRB to rely on subpoenas that are frequently delayed or ignored. A 2020 ProPublica investigation found that the NYPD routinely failed to provide the CCRB with essential records and body won't cam footage, particularly in the most severe cases. This information sharing system obstructs investigations and delays justice. We propose direct access to the NYPD misconduct database so that oversight is timely, complete, and independent. Third, and finally, CCRB disciplinary decisions must be final. Even when the CCRB substantiates misconduct and recommends discipline, the Police Commissioner can and most often does overrule them seventy percent of the time. This gross failure renders the board's work as merely symbolic rather than substantive, and the public's faith in oversight evaporates. We must give the CCRB binding disciplinary authority so accountability is not just a recommendation, but a guarantee. This proposal is a focused, role-specific solution to persistent accountability gap in one of the city's most consequential agencies. The NYPD wields immense authority, including the power to use force, and that demands robust, enforceable accountability. These reforms are essential to restoring public confidence, and when misconduct occurs, it leads to real consequences. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for your testimony. Any questions from the Commissioner?
Question for the first, thank you all for your testimony, for the first, um, testifier. Uh, sorry, I don't think we have your name written down. Mr. Stack, um, uh, what would be the difference between what you're proposing with the citizen enforcement line or entity as opposed to complaining to 311? What's the difference in sort of powers or ability for it to resolve it?
Sure. Thank you for the question. With 311, what happens is you basically fill out a form, and that goes to the department which is in charge of solving the issue. And unfortunately, what we've seen is departments don't necessarily take action. For example, if there's a truck that doesn't have any license plates that's in the middle of Eighth Avenue, you can complain via 311, but unfortunately, we don't see enforcement. The Citizens' Complaint Program, uh, as it currently operates with idling trucks, you take all the evidence you need in order for the Department of Environmental Protection to write the complaint. And so that forces, the current provision, program that was created, forces the department to either write a complaint or get back to you within forty-five days saying that it's, it's, um, frivolous, or it's not operable.
So for your proposal for a broader, basically broader jurisdiction, who would that go to, those complaints? What agency would that go to?
Well, currently, there's a balkanization of different agencies handling different issues. For example, Department of Sanitation gives, um, may write a complaint to a landlord where there's trash in front of the building. But we think that it's possible for a broader department to handle all these complaints, to be streamlined, and to promote the progress.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a, I have a quick question on the CCRB. So, um, one of the challenges that we have as a commission is looking at things that we can do legislatively, what we can do through charter revision, what city mandated, what state mandated. And so the recommendations that you've been talking about in terms of final disciplinary authority for, uh, for the, for the CCRB may not be within the, within the power and authority of the, of the charter. So what are some other recommendations that you might have and/or any other solutions that you look at in terms of, of providing more teeth or authority to the CCRB?
So we, in our research, we believe that, um, the charter is really the only way for the CCRB to have final disciplinary power because in the charter explicitly gives the Commissioner that final disciplinary power, which means that New York City is not, um, like Taylor's law does not apply to New York City because of that explicit, um, given, given power to the, to the Police Commissioner currently in the, in the charter. So that's why we believe in order for CCRB to have final disciplinary power, it would have to be a charter change. Um, in addition to that, though, I think a big one that, that we recommend is that expansion of the board to twenty-one members. So our recommendation is that the comptroller, um, appoints, uh, an individual to the CCRB because the comptroller is involved in all the financial payouts that, that are involved with NYPD, um, and that the number of, uh, individuals that are appointed by the, each borough by the city council, instead of one per borough, we would, uh, we would recommend that it's two. Um, in addition to that, I think that, um, the chair being co, like the interim chair having a limit of sixty days is huge. Currently, that interim chair is only appointed by the mayor. Um, that's a, a way that the mayor circumvents having to appoint a, a long-term chair, um, that, that has to be co-appointed with the, the Speaker of the City Council. Um, we have many other recommendations that are not to, to the charter, but, and, and we will send those in our written testimony as well. Um, but the ones that, that we included here were specifically, we believe, would only be remedied by the, by the city charter amendments.
Yeah, but you, I'm sorry, you, you do recognize that Taylor's law is a state law. So even if you change the city charter, preemption will still overrule the city charter, the state preemption law.
Yeah, just to clarify, we're not asking for disciplinary authority to be taken away from the Commissioner. Uh, we're asking that it be extended to the Commissioner, and that's where we see that Taylor's law wouldn't necessarily apply in this area. So we're extending it to the CCRB. Uh, there was a matter in, um, Rochester, New York, just in the last year or so, I think it was the last couple of years, in which, uh, there was a case that came out, um, well, they had a similar provision where they ended up passing a ballot measure that gave their, um, civilian oversight agency the ability to, uh, discipline, to have final disciplinary authority. And in that particular matter, Taylor's law did apply because the city itself was not exempt, um, was not exempt, um, from, the city was not exempt from, uh, from the Police Commissioner has to be a part of the bargaining process in that situation, or the disciplinary authority has to be part of that. So the city was not necessarily like exempt from the law itself, but New York City would be because there is an exception to New York City, uh, and that was something that was echoed by the ruling itself that said that, um, in this particular case, you could end up having it to where it could, it could extend to the, um, uh, to the, um, the CCRB and allow them to be able to carry out, as long as it's not taking away from the Police Commissioner.
Just to, just to add on to that, there was a 2006 Court of Appeals ruling that did confirm that police discipline in New York City was exclusively controlled by NYPD Commissioner under the city charter. Um, and that, that made it, it was a, it was a union issue, so it meant that they were prohibited, subject of, they were prohibited from being subject to collective bargaining, um, which also reaffirmed that New York City was not subject to Taylor's law when it came to final disciplinary power.
And we can share this analysis that we have as well.
Look, you talk into a union guy, and we can argue with this, and I can give you thirty other cases. Wait, wait, let me finish. I give you thirty other cases where the law has ruled the other way. But I am hitting, sitting today here as the co-chair of this commission, and I hear what you're saying, especially the numbers that you're putting together. Part of what the problem we have is trying to balance what we can do as a charter, uh, uh, recommendation and what could be done either administratively through local law or through state law. And as I stated earlier, there are limitations to what we can do. Having said that, I think that we all want to, interested in moving forward a system that is fair to the citizen first. Uh, justice denied, uh, delayed is justice denied. So if cases are not being heard because of lack of staffing, Commissioner, if cases are being waived because of the authority of the Commissioner, I think we need to look at it. And empowering oversight agencies is something that we're looking very interestingly. But we are, I mean, I'm struggling with the fact of keeping a balance between the various laws that seem to overlap, intertwine, and have decades of history, not just with PD. Some of the discussions with the Board of Correction is sort of the same thing. When you want to discipline Board of Correction officers, right? And it's the same kind of struggle that I have as a Commissioner. I can't speak for anybody else, but. And one, I, I hear resource. I hear all of that is important. I hear expanding the board. All of that's important. But when you say you want the CCRB to have the sole discretion, let me, let me finish, right? The sole discretion to institute penalty, but then the department has the authority, the responsibility to enforce that through a collective bargaining agreement, you can see as a union guy I have a problem with. You know what I'm saying? Because you don't, we don't negotiate. And I have eighteen thousand employees at the Police Department, uh, members. I don't negotiate with CCRB. I negotiate with the Police Department and the mayor of the City of New York. So given your premise, then it would have to be expanded further for me to negotiate with the agency that ultimately is gonna have to take responsibility. You see what I'm saying? So we're not talking one percent. Now we're talking about even more than that for an agency. And that's the conundrum that I'm faced. Okay? You, you don't need to, I just wanted, I'm sorry. I, I appreciate your testimony. I just want you to understand how difficult, and I think you know how complex this is. It's not as simple as just ascribing responsibility.
Yeah, I, I, I understand the circumstances that put us in a situation where it is difficult. I, I think the bigger picture here is there's a need of accountability. And what we've seen so far in the last ten years is that less than five percent of the cases themselves that have been substantiated um, have, are, it's pretty alarming that those officers are the only ones who've received any means of discipline in the first place. I think that's a matter of alarm in terms of how we're functioning overall. And if it is, because I have no doubt that even if this were to move forward and there were to be something happen, I would have no doubt that any union would end up litigating any possible thing that would end up coming forward. And we're asking here for New York City to give it a try. Because right now, what we've seen so far through legislation, whether it's in city council or we've seen through just my experience in police oversight in the last ten years, I have not seen much of an inch move with relation to how we can actually bring accountability to the department. Whether it comes to us having direct access, I've had those issues as an investigator, all the way to. I've had those issues as an investigator, all the way to the fact that we have these, the matter of statute limitation cases where suddenly you have a number, a good number of complaints, the majority of them just wiped out clean the following year because they're no longer relevant anymore. And that in itself speaks to a broken system. And for us to be able to work toward, you know, addressing a broken system, I think that we have to take some of these challenges. But we're just asking for officers to have the same level of accountability as other public servants have. I was accountable to the COIB in the city and my name would get published in those circumstances if I did something wrong. We're asking for wrongdoing to end up being met with discipline as it is to be able to give public trust in our department in the first place. Because now I think a lot of New Yorkers, and especially me being at the city for the last year itself, you kind of think to yourself like, where is the accountability here? Where's the oversight? And so, yes, I understand the union concern, but I also understand that we have to be able to have officers have the same level of discipline as any other public employee would have.
Okay, point was well taken. Listen, thank you all for your testimony. We have about 15 more panels to go. Jesus Christ. Let me call, we do have several panels up there. Let me call now the next panel. Okay, Kofu Yaya Okumi, Okumi, forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Francisco Navarro and Victoria A. Phillips. Go ahead.
Muy bien, ma jo. It means good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Akonfo Yaya Ansakumi and I come not as a victim, but as Victor, who has experienced some uncomfortable situations with EBT snap, food stamps. And I'm speaking for myself as well as for the thousands of other people who experienced the same. My allocations were given to me on May 1st and between May 1st and May 3rd, I made several purchases. On May 6th, someone decided to take $107 and then $98 and completely wiped out my available food stamps. I do not make purchases right immediately of large portion. I budget my money throughout the month so that I have money to make purchases for fresh fruits and vegetables for the day. I am a social security recipient of $87 for SSP and SSPA. Then I receive $985 for SSA. My rent is $235.60. My phone is $40. My ConEd on average is $20. So I'm left with $777.40 to work with during the month. I'd like to know which of you can work with that amount of money for the month. It's not doable. So to find myself in a predicament where $200 is removed from my food stamps is uncomfortable. I'm under the belief that this is an inside job. I'm under the belief that government is involved taking the monies from constituents and speaking on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I may have some questions afterwards, but Mr. Navarro?
Hi, so my name is Francisco Navarro. I'm a resident of Hell's Kitchen. I've worked at the mayor's office of operations since 1986. I'm also a member of a group called OCR, One City Rising, which is a group that's trying to push common sense policies in the city. But I'm here to make a couple of recommendations. One is around nonprofits, nonprofit funding. I think that transparency in that area would be really helpful. What happens is, you know, problems in the nonprofit sector come up when there's a scandal and then people don't know what happened, you know, how did this scandal happen? What I'm suggesting is that there be a, some kind of a transparent dashboard or something that people can access to see exactly how the money's spent. The problem is that when you have one or two bad actors, you know, everybody gets painted as a bad actor. You know, my own parents ran a nonprofit and I know that they were on the up and up. So it'd be great to have something like, you know, you have ProPublica that has, I think salaries of the main executives and then general high-level expenses and revenues. But it'd be great to see exactly how that money's spent because when you're talking about accountability, you know, it's millions of dollars that the city gives to these folks. And I think since it's our taxpayer money ultimately, we should know exactly how that money's spent. That kind of exposure and transparency would highlight the people who do a really good job and it would help to expose those that are not doing good work. I myself was kind of involved in this type of process because, you know, we have open data with the city and I ran, I run a secret shopper program. Our general counsel decided to put our data on open data. So then there was an article in the city, you know, that online newspaper. There was a hearing that I testified at and we actually met with staff in the Public Advocates Office regarding what we were doing. It wasn't perfect, you know, they'd exposed some flaws that we had in the way we were running the program, but ultimately it was a good process to go through because it, you know, shone the light on what we were doing and helped us identify places where we could improve what we were working on. So I think, I think, you know, when you had the problem with Thrive NYC, you know, you got, you got all kinds of conspiracy theories and, you know, where did $800 million go? If we had this kind of a system, the first question would need to be asked, you know? We would know exactly where that money went and that it's not laying in somebody's bank account someplace, you know, like Cayman Islands or anything like that. So that's my recommendation. That's something I think that when we're talking about government accountability, it should be looked at. The other thing is the process for bringing items up via charter mission commission, it seems to be limited to two, right? When the mayor calls for it or when a group like this is, you know, put together to do it and it's like a counter type of thing. But one of the main, one of the biggest ground shaking changes in the way city government selected was, you know, term limits and that was done via a petition through the city, through the city charter revision process. And that was petitioned by Ron Lauder. He used his money to get it done. The law department challenged it. He managed to succeed and so now we have term limited, you know, elected officials.
Yeah, Mr. Navarro, if you could bring the testimony.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. So yeah, so I think that's what we look at to, you know, when talking about democracy, find a way to make petitions easier to happen so they don't rely on big money.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Peace and blessings, everyone. I'm Chaplain Dr. Victoria A. Phillips. Everyone calls me Dr. V. And I remember speaking to y'all about a week ago. And so I'll just say, I'm one of the co-founders of the Jails Action Coalition, one of the lead organizers in the Beyond Rosie's campaign, and I sit on the coordinating committee for the Closed Rikers campaign. So with all that being said, for about eight years, I sat on the advisory board for the Department of Corrections and was the co-chair to the Young Adult Department of Corrections Task Force. And so I say that because I come with experience, you know, and not just, I come with experience behind the walls, but also a balance. And my balance comes from my chaplain hat, from my nursing hat, from my monitoring those with mental health concerns and from my CBT, cognitive behavior therapy and working with the youth behind the walls. And so the other day, you know, I was thinking about government accountability and where could I go with this? And everyone comes and they're telling you what we want you to do for the Board of Corrections, how we want you to give them the ability to hold DOC accountable. And I thought over, you know, Jails Action Coalition, we formed in December 2011. And so I thought over the last decade, over the last 14 years, what is the most that I really wanted y'all to get? And I couldn't think of one thing. As I went through my old notebooks and stuff, I came across 111919, right? And on this day, I was writing down notes about students with disabilities double the amount of uses of force. I was writing down notes of medical staff not always giving access to individuals. I spoke about that, an incident like that last year for Currisman Jones not having access to medical five times. But this is from 111919. So you see where I'm going with this? There still is no change when it comes to DOC or accountability. And so the importance of making sure that the Board of Corrections has the ability to hold DOC accountable is extremely important. And I want to talk about the women. Women is never really spoken about. So I was happy when Stephanie mentioned them today. But one out of four women go into Rikers Island being a sexual assault survivor, a DV survivor. Many of them are trafficked and there's no programming that adequately fits their trauma. And then recently, last month, men were brought into the Rosie's facility. Unacceptable. I just said, we have people in there who are DV survivors, survivors of sexual assault and the audacity of New York City Department of Corrections to think that at any time it would be okay to bring men. I testified to Board of Corrections last week regarding women officers who have called my 800 number with my chaplain hat on saying, Dr. V, Chaplain V, I can't work in this facility. And I say this, I want to raise this because last year I spoke on the Board of Corrections and I put it on the record that a officer was told by her union members to call me because DOC would not follow up with her after she was sexually assaulted on tour by another uniform officer. And DOI would not even follow up until I spoke her truth on the record. And then the very next day, 21 days later, after her incident, DOI reached out to her and that incident was founded. What happened to the officer? BOC can't follow up and make sure that something is done with the officer? So when we say please extend BOC's authority to make sure that they can actually say and hold DOC accountable to minimum standards and following the law as the army brat with a mama in the military cemetery, I truly believe that it is my purpose to help fight for those who don't have a union rep, to help fight for those who will never be seen. Do you know 311 wasn't even accessible for many people in Rosie's last month? I put that on the board, on the Board of Corrections on the record last week. Why is that? They couldn't even send out a grievance. So where, where do they go and who do they call? And BOC don't even have the authority to make DOC accountable for that. So I know I'm over my time, but there are so many examples I could give you over the last 15 years behind walls of Rikers Island when it comes to a lack of accountability. Please hear me, hear all of us.
Thank you all three for your testimony. I know that there may be some questions. Yes, Commissioner Wood?
I have a couple of comments, ma'am, with the food stamps issue. You know, that's a common issue that's happening and so I had a meeting a couple of months ago with the HRA commissioner and they are aware of it. So I don't know if the staff on this commission, because all the city folks do work together to be able to help make a call because I've also heard numerous problems in the Asian American community, especially with seniors because they don't speak the language. So, you know, you're buying milk one day and the next day you're going in there and there's, you have no money. And so I think there's a way to report it and so.
I did, I called 311 and I spoke with.
I think it helps if you talk to HRA directly and so.
You can't, you can't speak to anybody directly when you call HRA. There's, the phone number just rings.
I will, let's connect afterwards.
So I'm the customer service liaison at my office and I deal with the public and I have a contact at HRA that I can reach out to. I just need the details, you can email me.
Done, okay. And then the thing I wanted to also to add to your comment about the nonprofit funding transparency, having been almost in for almost 30 years a nonprofit in New York, I will tell you that the transparency isn't the problem. It's the fact that something that we're all fighting about right now is for us, the nonprofits to get paid on time so we could pay our staff on time. And there's a lot of delays. I think part of, you know, being good citizens is paying attention to what is happening with the budget. There are numerous opportunities for the things for the public to weigh in, the things that you've said is relevant and, you know, city council testimony, right now, you know, executive budget hearings are happening, so I encourage you to go out and reach out and use your voice. Democracy is only good if you, if we participate and participate actively. We can't just sit by and throw our hands up in the air. As for the nonprofits, we all have to file 990s and tax returns and we get audited regularly by city auditors, state auditors. And so there's, sometimes I think we are choking with how we're spending money, how we have to provide details.
Right.
When we're not getting paid fast enough. So that's just, I just wanted to add that to you.
Yeah.
And by the way, there is a dashboard already. It's the City Controller Maintenance Dashboard School, Checkbook 2.0. I urge you to look at it. It has all the spending for the city for all the contracts, including nonprofit, in which you can filter.
If I looked at that, could I research Thrive NYC?
Pardon me?
Could I research Thrive NYC?
Yes, not only that, there's actually a Thrive NYC page.
Oh, really?
At the city council finance, you can seek, including every contract.
Okay.
It exists.
That should be publicized.
All right. Folks. Thank you. Excuse me, in regards to the food stamp issue, if I may, I called 311 and I was told that as of December 24th, 2024, no monies will be refunded that missing from your EBT account. I was told to get in contact with my local law enforcement, go to the precinct and make a complaint. I was told to go to HRA and file for a new card and that I was told once I received the new card and closed the original account, that I was supposed to change my PIN number often and use freeze, unfreeze indication on the website, on the internet. But everybody does not have a cell phone, everybody doesn't have a smartphone. And so that's, puts people at a disadvantage. All right, ma'am, we're going to reach out and help because if we can have your information and staff, we'll definitely reach out. Thank you. And we're going to call for the last panel, but we do have a time sensitive issue which refers to the minutes that we did not, we can't do the minutes. Okay. Last panel, Molly Senak and Rain Riley. Are you here? So you're on Zoom? All right. Ms. Senak, would you start?
Sure. Thank you so much. So first of all, let me just thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony at this public hearing on government accountability. My name is Molly Senak and I am testifying on behalf of the other community organizers for the Center for Independence of the Disabled New York, otherwise known as Sydney. We are an independent living center that serves people of all ages with all disabilities across all five boroughs of New York City. And as we talk about government accountability, we would like to say that true accountability requires transparency and accessible information and accurately represented community interest. As the commission considers charter reforms that will increase overall accountability within New York City government, we urge you to prioritize equity, accessibility and inclusion in the process, especially for New York, pardon me, New Yorkers with disabilities who make up approximately one-fifth of New York City's population. Therefore, Sydney makes the following recommendations. We ask that the New York City Charter should ensure accessibility by explicitly requiring that all public hearings, participatory budget sessions and community board meetings be fully accessible. This includes providing ASL interpretation, live captioning and accessible digital participation options by default, not just upon request. We also say that the charter should expand disability representation in city government. We recommend amending the charter to require a disability advisory committee to provide guidance on accessibility and equity across all agencies. This type of advisory committee could be critical to the oversight and enforcement of Local Law 12, which requires all city agencies to develop and eventually implement a five-year plan to ensure that each agency's workplace, programs and services are accessible to people with disabilities. Additionally, there should be dedicated seats for people with disabilities on major decision-making bodies, including the NYC Planning Commission and the Civic Engagement Commission. And then referencing what I believe it was Senator Krueger was saying earlier, we would also ask that all proposed changes to the charter should be provided to the public. should be provided to the public in plain language and well enough in advance to allow for public comment so that the information provided can be accurate and accessible and to ensure that voters are well-informed and can participate in the process. Additionally, because government accountability and budget transparency are linked, we would like to reiterate the recommendations that Sydney submitted during the commission's hearing on budget transparency. Uh, we would like to make sure that uh budget information is accessible for people with disabilities and that the Charter should require that all budget-related documents and presentations be provided in accessible formats. And we would like to involve people with disabilities in the budget decision-making process. Recommend, and we recommend amending the Charter to require a disability impact statement for major budget proposals, representation of disabled New Yorkers on key budget-related advisory committees and consultation with disability-led organizations during the development of agency budgets. Um, and then on that note, because I know that we are limited on time, I'm just going to once again thank the commission and to thank you for staying so late. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your testimony, uh, Ms. Rain Riley. Could you start your testimony, please?
Um, hi, good evening. Um, thank you for staying late for me again. I remember you from last week and I really appreciate it. Um, my name is Rain Riley and I'm a member of the New York State Tenant Block based in Queens. Um, and I would just like to first state just to everybody that Eric Adams is a leech who seems to thrive when harming our city and draining its resources. Um, and that he gets off on abusing his power, that he's not my mayor. But it is nice that he's helped make clear that there are major gaps that need to be filled in our charter regarding mayoral overreach. Um, I've attached written testimony with facts and numbers, but after everything we've heard today, I think sharing my own story is my priority as we end the night because the lack of accountability in our government has harmed me and those I love immensely. I am a housing justice advocate, which means I'm acutely aware of the new federal laws criminalizing homelessness. Um, the recent BOC and DOC meeting was extremely disappointing. I was too sick to show up that day in person, um, so I didn't get to have my testimony heard. Um, I've been legally homeless since twenty twenty after escaping domestic violence and still have a permanent restraining order of, uh, permanent order of protection. But um, right now I have a judge order to vacate my housing again. Um, the landlord sued me while taking my rental assistance, lied about their rent stabilization status. With all of this going on the building, I started a tenant union to especially help my non-English speaking neighbors in flushing um from being exploited. Um, and I was harassed constantly. Um, all of the forms keep getting taken down. They won't let me put a board up. Um, I was even called a crippled bitch, um, which I was like, that's kind of creative. Um, but I have a chronic progressive disease that eats through my organs um and my internal structures, like my nerves and my muscles and things. Um, and it doesn't have a cure. And I've lost eight organs so far. Um, I've been denied disability. I was denied home care assistance seven times now. Um, and frankly, I'm really just exhausted and I've accepted that I'll be on the street in June as I wait to hear back from home base. Um, I'm also transgender, non-binary, so my X-gender marker is not recognized federally anymore, which is causing me a lot of legal problems as well. So if I have a health or a mental crisis in the street and I come across the NYPD, there, we, we know what is most likely going to happen, right? I'm going to end up um incarcerated. And having stress like that everywhere I go all day, you know, that makes my disease grow faster, which I don't want because I want to participate in society and have a job. Um, and wheelchair accessible buildings, they've been being held hostage by able-bodied people who have money. Um, so today I'm just really, really asking that we recognize how prevalent and unregulated and deadly the hospital to homeless to prison pipeline is. Um, because I think we forget the first part of that with the disability. Um, and I attached in my testimony things that I think would be good to propose, like diversifying the commission appointments for the BOC, expanding the number of commissioners. Uh, and please, 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 we need to find a way to immediately implement Local Law forty-two. Um, thank you so much for your time and for staying and I hope you have a good evening and you get home safe.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions by the commissioner? All right, thank you both.
I want to remind everyone that we'll be back. Our final round of hearings will begin in June after the commission staff releases an updated set of recommendations to the commission. Our next hearings are on Monday, June sixteenth at Wagner College in Staten Island, which will focus on government accountability.
Can you, can you hear that? Can you hear her? Just it. Yeah, okay.
Is my microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So uh, I had just announced that we will be doing our final round of um hearings uh starting in June. The first will be on Monday, June sixteenth at Wagner College in Staten Island, which will focus on government accountability. Tuesday, June seventeenth at Mine Builders Creative Arts Center in the Bronx, focusing on budget transparency. Monday, June twenty-third at the Museum of the City of New York in Manhattan, focusing once again on government accountability. Thursday, June twenty-sixth will be at Sunset Park Library in Brooklyn, focusing on land use. And on Tuesday, July first, at the Queens Public Library in Jamaica, that will be our final hearing, which will focus on any topic that we have not addressed uh up to that point. All hearings are from five to seven and folks are invited to testify either in person or via Zoom. Registration and further details on all hearings are on our website at www.thecommission.nyc.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, we have one last matter, which is that of the minutes corresponding for May sixth, twelfth and fourteenth. Uh, can we get a motion to approve the minute? Do we get a second? Who, who made the motion? Commissioner Jones, can we get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Lopez. Uh, any questions, any corrections? With that, let's take a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any nay? Any abstention? The ayes haven't sorted, the minutes have been approved. Um, at this point, we're going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Our motion has been made properly second. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. Any abstention? The ayes hatter, thank you so much, we are adjourned.